The October 13th meeting of the Irelia State's Board of Education has come to order. It's good to be back. So this is a teacher work day, so I'm glad they're off and we're working. That's a good thing for them. Dr. James, do you have any adjustments to the agenda?
None at this time.
Okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion. We had a board member comment in front of public comment to our agenda.
So we have, okay, you want, you want just, can we do that? So you want board member comments in front or no, what was your motion?
Behind public comment.
Okay, so to, right, the, the motion has been made to add board member comments after public comments, but before Dr. James's comments. Do I have a second?
Okay.
We have a second. Any discussion? Anybody want to be recognized? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of board member comments being added between the public comments and Dr. James's comments say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. It's five to two, I think, I've got on that. Okay. All right. Any others adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask Ms. 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 Haynes for a motion to go in a closed session.
We haven't approved.
Oh, we had to, I'm so sorry, thank you, thank you. So I'm ready to go in a closed session, I guess. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda, the agenda, the agenda as posed, moved? We have a motion approved and second. So Mr. Hope made the motion, Mr. Angel made the second. All those in favor of the agenda as posed, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
We have five to two. Okay. So now, Ms. Haynes.
I move the board going to closed session pursuant North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11 for the following reasons. Under subsection A1, to discuss matters that are confidential under the law, specifically personnel matters under North Carolina General Statute 115C-319 and student matters under 20 U.S.C. Section 1232G, as well as under subsection A3, to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Sloan. All those in favor going to closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none, seven zero. We are now in closed session.
We'll return to open session now. This is the Iredale State's full Board of Education October 13th, 2025 meeting. We came out of closed session and this is a teacher work day today, so it may not be as many people here as we would normally have sometime, but we're going to do the business of Iredale State's full schools. So first on the agenda, we want to welcome everyone. And we normally have a moment of silence. We have a moment of silence and we normally do that 15, 20, 30 seconds on that. So let's just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right. Next is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next on the agenda is the consent agenda and under the consent agenda, we have personnel and approval minutes. So we'll start with personnel. Dr. LaVar Mazel.
Good evening, Chairman Knight, Board of Education, Dr. James. I'm here tonight to answer the follow-up questions concerning our personnel report.
And of course with personnel, there's only, we've discussed this some in closed session. We can only ask certain type questions in open session, so I'll open it up to the board if anyone wants to be recognized to ask a question for Dr. Mazel in open session. Go ahead, Mr. Sloan.
I would like to make a comment. I talked to a student last year that was struggling in math. It's in one of our high schools, West Iredale. And she was all smiles when I talked to her and she was passing math and her Kenya teacher was doing great. And I wanted to pass that along. I had been wondering about it and I liked hearing it from a kid.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, it's one of the things, as you know, I think you and Dr. Barry, Dr. Mazel, worked on finding those math teachers and they've done real well. Yes. They've done real well. Any other questions, comments? Dr. Mazel? Okay, hearing none. Next, we have the approval minutes. Excuse me. We have the minutes and since we're supposed to approve the consent agenda, approval minutes and consent agenda. So I think what I'll do is I'll just ask to approve the personnel and administration under consent agenda. Then we'll prove the, do the approval minutes separately. Is that, yes, go ahead.
The minutes needed to be revised.
Okay, that was the closed session ones or the open session ones as well?
The ones, wasn't it the ones, just the?
That was just closed session. These would just be open sessions.
Yeah, that was just closed. Yes, that's okay.
Mr. Chairman, you can take these together as a consent agenda.
I can take them together. Okay. So any, any questions on the minutes from the September 15th, 2025 Board of Education meeting? That way we don't have to have two votes. So any questions on those? Hearing none, I'll move on and the personnel and the minutes are in the consent agenda, so I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve by Mr. Rhonda Hoke. Do I have a second? We have a second by Mr. Sloan. All those in favor of approving this consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Hearing none at seven zero. So we have no recognitions this time, but we do have Lake Shore Middle. Did I make a mistake? Okay, we do have Lakeshore Middle School on the school spotlight, the Lakeshore Middle School Lakers. So look forward to this.
I have some introductions. Good evening, everybody. My name is Magdalena Statler. I'm the principal at Lakeshore Middle School. I brought a few of my colleagues to help co-present for the spotlight. To my left is the assistant principal, Miss Sarah Tucker, and then I've got two grade level chairs, Mrs. Kelly Cannon, she's our eighth grade chair, and Mr. Logan Overcash, he's our sixth grade chair. So let's just start with a quick overview. Our demographics are displayed there. We are about four percent Hispanic, four percent Asian, eight point five African-American, sixty-one percent white, and ten percent multi. Our enrollment summary has increased over the past couple of weeks. We are now sitting at right at five oh one, with eighth grade being our largest grade level. Our class sizes are around twenty-two, twenty-three for ELA and math, but we lost a couple of positions at the end of last year, so our science and social studies classes are a little bit bigger at around twenty-eight. The courses we offer are standard middle school courses, math, ELA, science, social studies, advanced ELA and math, and also a high school course, Math One. Our electives are physical education, band chorus, arts, STEM, and computer technologies. After about ten years of not revisiting our vision and mission statement, we got together as a staff on the last ERPD session, and we had input from all the teachers to say, who do we want to be? What do we see ourselves to be in the future? And this is the statement that everybody came up with collectively, to nurture compassionate and respectful leaders who demonstrate perseverance, accountability, and empathy, as well as to inspire innovative, well-rounded, critical thinkers prepared to thrive as global citizens. Our mission statement we collectively created was to create a safe and positive school where every student is inspired, challenged, and supported to grow through equity, collaboration, and a growth mindset. So what does it mean to be a Laker for us? What is our culture? What do we stand for? We stand for a culture of collaboration. Everything we do, we do together. We problem solve together. We figure things out together. We look critically at our data together. So our first order of business this year is we require all student, not students, teachers to plan together weekly to create planning documents. Over the summer, we had a summer leadership. We got input from grade level chairs and various other staff members on setting higher expectations for ourselves. We meet every Tuesday in grade levels where we problem solve. We look at students, we look at data, we look at things that are at risk, we look at things that need our immediate attention. We're solutions focused. We focus on action steps rather than complaining. We have set some very good action steps for our goal teams this year. We focus on academic success through motivating students and paying close attention to the details. So monthly, we meet in goal teams. We discuss what steps we need to take, what actions do we need to take. We also prioritize student motivation. For students to take their EOG seriously and show growth and perform, they need to be motivated to do so. We've done quite a few different things to really work on student motivation. And our motto is one percent better every day, looking at all the details of all the things we do, from transitioning between classes, how we walk to lunch, how we talk to each other, all of the things, every day's details are where, where the, the growth will come from. And we have some celebrations to share this evening. We are very proud Lakers. Lakeshore Middle School exceeded growth this past academic year. We're the only middle school in ISS to exceed growth. Our proficiency increased from, by nine percent from fifty-one up to sixty, and we had the highest, Lakeshore had the highest proficiency increase overall. We improved our school degree from a D to a C. I'm going to let Ms. Tucker look at some data in a little bit more detail with you guys.
So here's our five-year trend data. You can see when we got the data back the previous year in twenty-four, and we saw that we had dropped down to a D school, we knew that was not us. That's not our students, that's not our staff, that's not our community. So we immediately, we got right to work. We looked at the data, we dissected it, and in, like Dr. Statler said, we're problem solvers. We got, we started looking at what are we going to do? So if you want to go to the next slide, you can kind of see that we, we've been up there before, so we know what it takes to get back up there, and that's what we started to do. We started to look at our subgroups. We started to, and, and right here, this is our subgroup. We had one subgroup that did not show growth, and it was our African-Americans, and their, the GLP is the proficiency there, and they went down by just one. So they were at forty-one, and they went down to forty. So they just barely didn't meet growth. So like I said, we, we got right to work. We really thought about what our core instruction looked like, and how can we increase our core instruction? How can we meet the needs of all of our students, all of our subgroups? And so one of the ways, and I think it's Ms. Cannon, and that's going to talk about it, is how we utilize our Laker time. This year with our schedule, we've implemented a Laker time. I believe we've had it previously, but last year we did not. In doing so, we are implementing interventions. Students that are demonstrating the need for interventions in math, reading, as well as eighth grade science, get that help during this thirty-minute block of each day. The goal for us is to have ten students or less in the intervention groups, so that we can work on specific standards and work on helping them in all the ways we can. We do look at different data to help us with this. It's not just choosing students that we think. We look at our diagnostics. We are looking at our EOGs, our common formative assessments, as well as our check-ins that we'll take next week. The students do have an incentive. It is not a stuck situation. Once they're in, they're not in there forever. We do work and look at their data, and as they're improving, or other students are demonstrating that they need that assistance, we will switch them out, and kids that exit go to a club. Students that are not chosen for interventions do get a club. We do have a variety of clubs that we'll show in a second, but it does help us with our social emotional learning. All three grade levels are mixed, so it's not by grade level. They get to see each other in the hallways, and they get to see each others in these clubs. It does help in, increase our attendance, because kids get excited when they get to go to chess, or they get excited to go to STEM or art, as well as it is an opportunity to build a relationship, some with staff members that they're not used to seeing, or in a subject or a club that they wouldn't have expected that teacher to enjoy. Here are some of the clubs that we have. We have incorporated some advanced art and chorus and PE. We do have our Battle of the Books team that will meet during this time, as well as our chess, and I believe they will do the competition, the tournament. We do have a cozy reading corner for kids that simply just want to be able to read a book. We also have an exploration of foreign cultures, fitness, and healthy living. We've implemented a drama club to help us with our spring musical, as well as jazz band meets during this time. Laker Hall is a study hall. Some of these students have just simply chosen to be able to work. These are athletes, or some children that just know they take a little bit longer, and they need a little bit of extra time to do their work. We do have a Lego club, Living Like Lakers. It's kind of helping students with self-esteem, organization, communication skills with others. We have a Makerspace Club, Retro Gaming, which is like board games, it's not our electronic ones. We also have robotics, a STEM club, as well as, this is when our yearbook will meet. And then we have some additional factors.
So just a couple other things we want to highlight about how we got here, and it had the successful data trends in our data. For students, it was very powerful to have one of those one-on-one conversations with teachers, and seeing really how a computer system suggested you would perform on a test versus how they actually performed. So that's very powerful for students. Dr. Statler coming into our school in February made a big difference with our students and our staff for motivating them to do well in their assessments. And then we've already talked about as well, it took all hands on deck at our school, science social studies especially, to support our ELA and math teachers with their tier-one instruction. We've already talked about how one percent every day, you wouldn't think that the small things matter, but they do, and if you can improve on the small things, you can help the big things. Another big motivator for our students, and what contributed to our success, was our EOG celebration. Students were encouraged to show growth on EOGs, and there was kind of a tiered system of how you were rewarded that you earned based on your growth. So even if you didn't pass the EOG, everyone was motivated to grow and do their personal best. Again, I think having the criteria from the school board about promotion helped our students and our families to know exactly what they needed to do, and some students were very motivated to perform on tests, knowing that. Again, for us, using close attention to what's going on in our school, and then the last thing is, I think for us currently, we retained a hundred percent of core teachers moving into this year. So not only does that contribute to the success we had, but where we're going this year as well. One other thing we're proud of to highlight, Mrs. Tucker and our data manager, Mrs. Molton, worked really hard this summer to work on cleaning up our building, and that included with the new staff lounge in the center there. We really didn't have a staff lounge, or a lunchroom, or any kind of place to collaborate, and you can see a picture there. They did a really nice job to give us a place to work with our colleagues and actually have that collaboration and team building. That also included cleaning of storage rooms and grade level workrooms to just remove some of our clutter, and we filled two construction dumpsters through that process, and then making our front office nicer as well with welcoming for our community, our parents as they come on our campus. Lastly, is just some things to highlight about our community involvement. The first thing on there is we're in the process of doing curriculum nights, where we are really just trying to get our parents in our building and talking about what parents and students and families can do at home to support our school. Already mentioned as well, we're doing a musical production in the past, and have another one scheduled this year. All of our grade levels experience field trips, which involves our community, involving some people coming into our campus, as well as us going off campus. Our PTO is hosting a color run in two weeks. That's our big fundraising investment, hope to improve our school. We have night of the arts in the past, and we'll have one of those again, where our, our art, our chorus, and our band are all highlighted in that process. We think about daily car rider greeting. It was an elementary school thing for younger students, but it matters for older students too, for our parents and students to see that. They are welcomed every morning on our campus. Our art teacher, Mr. Larson, is entering students' camp in the statewide art competition, and that's a bonus for us. Our band and chorus will once again perform the National Anthem at the Charlotte Checkers Game, and then Blumenthal musical workshops for our band. So there are several staff celebrations, and pictures we wanted to show really quick. Ms. Cannon and I will give you the highlights there. We did have three teachers recognized a few months ago here at a school board meeting, completing their national board certification, Mr. Richardson, Mrs. Freitas, and Mr. Larson. And then again, speaking of Mr. Larson, again, he was on a personal level, once again accepted as an artist to the North Carolina Museum of Art to have his art showcased. One of our big CTE trips, the district provides, is Careers on Will, is coming up again in a couple weeks for our sixth graders. Had it in the spring this year because of Hurricane Helene, but a great experience for our sixth graders in our county. Give me, go ahead again.
Sure.
Seventh graders did the district robotics competition, not seventh grader, excuse me. This is open to all students. Ms. Braswell, our science teacher on the right there in that middle picture is our host, and this is from April twenty-five when they participated.
Our eighth graders do go to Washington. We will go to Washington again in March. It is a great experience for those attending to learn about our country, to be able to see the museums, and learn about our history. While we are there, we do lay a wreath for Lakeshore Middle at the Tomb of the Unknown. Students have to write an essay, and the teachers vote on that essay on who is chosen to do so. Last year, we won the district championship for the boys' basketball, which they were extremely excited for. And then sixth grade did a whole bunch of hands-on activities.
Yeah, those are all from three labs we've done so far this school year. The one in the middle, the Skittles lab, is actually a math lab, so both science and math, social studies and ELA, all doing hands-on learning to support our students.
Seventh grade also does various hands-on experience, especially doing with the equipment, with microbiology and studying cells. Our CTE doesn't compete in the STEM or STEAM competition, where they go, and I'm not sure how we did though.
They were second or third.
Yeah.
Those are seventh graders.
Yeah. Our seventh grader, social studies, do a variety of activities as well. It's not just science or math. In some of these, they are creating boats or towers, and having to work together and collaborate, try new ideas that work, and sometimes they don't work. This is one of our new healthy living clubs. I believe Ms. Bush is putting it on, that is helping kids learn different things. It's not about just fitness, it's about healthy eating, and what students can do even at their level to help themselves out for the longer run.
One of our big field trips for sixth grade this past year was the NASCAR Hall of Fame. They were super accommodating. Students did a STEM lab, and got to experience the Hall of Fame toward the exhibits, actually do a pit simulation, got to do a race on a computer. It's a very cool field trip for us that we're looking forward to probably doing again this year. There's just pictures of what we mentioned earlier, the band and chorus doing their National Anthem performance at the Checkers Game. Again, band also, just as much as chorus, putting themselves out there, performing an MPA and receiving an excellent rating this past spring.
Eighth grade does a variety of different activities. In this case, the students are blowing bubbles on the tables to determine which brand of soap will allow them to blow the biggest bubbles. Most students think it's Dawn, because that's what they're associated with, but it's actually Gain most of the time. They also say Gain smells the best.
I agree.
We also learn about adaptations, where we do a competition, Battle of the Beaks, where each student has a different type of beak, whether it's tweezers, a binder clip, a fork, I'm not sure what the other one is that we did, but they have to be able to feed and eat different things, like toothpicks, macaroni, rubber bands, and beans, to figure out which type of birds eat best, and why birds have adapted into separate birds. We also do a variety of inquiry labs in eighth grade. This one is about chemical change. Students are given four substances that they are not told what they are, and we walk through how to put them together, and then we ask the students which two substances create each effect in the chemical change lab. Two of them will make the color change, two of them make a gas form and blow up the bag. Some of it makes it hot, some of it makes it cold, and the kids have to work out which ones are which. And then this is a part of our EOG celebration. Students had time outside where we had inflatables, that they could participate, a variety of games, and one of the highlights was being able to pye a teacher.
And then last thing, one of our very, very positive things for our school, Ms. Tucker puts on for us, our positive office referrals. Teachers can nominate a student for anything positive that's going on, that they see or experience, and they actually call the parent of the student with the student present in her, in the admin office. So it's a, instead of an office referral being a negative, it's a positive thing for our students to think of that with our school leadership.
And that's it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I open it up, I'll just say, I, I, I've got a couple comments at the end, because you did some stuff that's really cool, that I, I'll, I'll give a little bit of my background on it. So any comments, board members? Go ahead, Mr. Kubenik.
I wanted to congratulate you on your academic achievements over the last couple of years, because I'm kind of a data guy, and I've been looking, you know, I've been looking at the numbers. But, you know, to go to exceed, you said the only middle school, correct? So outstanding. Can you tell me why the science proficiency scores tend to be so much higher? It's not just unique to your school, but it's, why do, why do science seem to have higher proficiency scores than the math, you know, math than the reading, but, but why is it the science?
It's usually a combination of things. If you saw the data, it did dip this year because of the new tests and new standards. However, generally, the students do better in science because it's more tangible for them. When they're learning about equations, and they're learning about quadratic formulas, these are concepts that we can work on, helping them understand with projectile motion, but science is very hands-on. It's their everyday world. They can recognize chemical chains from baking a cake. They can recognize the flowers, and how we need to use bees to help pollinate this flower or that flower. I feel, and that's my opinion as a science teacher, it's simply more tangible. We get to do, in some cases, more fun activities, not that math can't, and they don't, but kids also have a stigma when it comes to math and it comes to reading, and in science, it's a little bit different. It's a little less pressure leading up to it, and so I guess that's my opinion on why sometimes ours is higher than some of the math and the ELA.
Very good. And I also noticed that you've actually been able to drive down your chronic absenteeism numbers, so I think that's probably a direct correlation to your improved academic performance, right? It's outstanding. Well, congratulations. Thank you.
Next, anyone else? Ms. Sloan?
Yes, the daily motto, I love it, because we can all look back at yesterday and see things that we've done wrong and things we can improve on, but we can't do a thing about it. But we can improve today. I love it. The electives, I see you see, have six electives. Is the amount of elective that students can take, is that a earned thing? And is there a limit? Is, is there some students that would like to take art in its full, and have, have to take another elective?
This year, we started something new with our sixth graders, to get them a little bit more exposure. If they take band, it's year-long, and PE, it's year-long. bit more exposure. If they take band, it's year-long, and PE, it's year-long. But the science, technology, the computer technologies, art, and chorus, they can take for a semester. So they can take something for the first semester, take something different for the second semester, for the seventh and eighth graders. But the sixth graders, we're rotating them through so that they get a taste of each of those four to make a better informed decision by the time they get to seventh grade. Some of them didn't know that they loved singing because they never had a chance to, but once you expose them to it, they say, oh, I do actually like this and I'm good at it.
One more clarification, I might not have heard right. When you said bird changing to another bird, I've never heard of that before.
All right. I can explain it. So it's kind of looking at Darwin's natural selection. He looked at the birds in the Galapagos Islands, and through that, he started noticing certain birds were always eating certain foods. And he was able to connect that at one time, they were one species, and through the process of adaptations and being able to thrive eating the toothpicks more than another bird, they were able to predominantly take over this island. And then the birds adapted and became a new species of birds, eating a different type like the beans.
Maybe it's for a different occasion, but I don't believe in Darwin's theory at all.
Science doesn't care what you believe, Mr. Sloan.
It's baloney.
And I'll also, can I tell the kids when we get to this unit? I tell them, I understand if you don't agree with it, but I also tell them that when you were going to debate somebody that you disagree, it's best to understand the other side so that you can counter, argue what they're going to say. So we kind of play it both ways. We don't tell them one way or the other. I just present the information in the science point of view.
Thank you, Ms. Sloan. And no offense, Ms. Sloan, I'm just having a little fun. All right. Anyone else?
Sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hoek's going to talk.
I don't say a whole lot, but I love the energy in this presentation. It was the enthusiasm's there, and I look forward to, we've been coming out and visiting some schools and stuff, haven't got to the South End yet, but I look forward to coming down there. Congratulations.
Anyone else? Okay, just a couple from my point of view. Seventh grade clubs and, you know, the Laker time, interest clubs, they can make a huge difference in a kid's life. I mean, my seventh grade Rocket Club, Mr. Howard Heiss up at Hudson Middle School changed my life. I do rockets, you know, that's some of the stuff I do in space. So they can make a huge difference, and it's so, so important. And I love seeing stuff like, you know, from the science side, but then for those that aren't interested in science, you've got a lot of different ones. That's just really, really nice. Other thing I'd just comment, growth's more important than the proficiency. That's key because everybody can hit growth. And as you grow, you become more proficient. So that's that fundamental part of it there. The other thing, the penny lab, I used to do that back in the '90s, early '90s, when I taught high school at West Caldwell. I actually did that.
They still love it.
They still love it. I don't know, I don't know if I saw it or I don't know what. But I did that, and you talk about towers. Do y'all guys do the toilet paper towers? Have you done that one before? Because the toilet paper tower is really cool. We give them toilet paper, water, so they can get it wet, and like a meter stick so they can, or something they can wrap it around, and see who can make the highest freestanding tower out of toilet, not used, you know, clean toilet paper. I had to make sure, it's middle schools, I had to make sure. But that's just, I just, I just love it. I agree with Mr. Hoek about the energy and the other things that were said about the good, good things that are going there. And Ms. Schaefer, Dr. Schaefer, I'm not sure which, is it?
Dr. Stabler.
Dr. Schaefer, sorry. Staphel?
Stabler.
Stabler. I'm so sorry.
State of North Carolina.
Yes, ma'am. Please don't use a stapler on me for that. But, Dr. Stabler, you've been there how long? Since February?
Yes, I started on February 3rd last year.
And that's just amazing, raising a whole letter grade, not just, you know, it's not all you, because you gotta, but you have to lead. And then it's the people going out that you lead, that you lead and you motivate to do good work, and that's just, it's testament to everyone there. I'm just so, so proud of you guys. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. So now we're on to the non-consent agenda. By the way, I would argue, science is more fun than math. So I unfortunately said that when Mr. Steele comes up and is talking about audits, which is all math, and budgets and accounting, but...
And I'll argue the other way. Science is not fun for me. I like math.
Well, I'm glad you do, because that's what you do, and you do very good at it, Mr. Steele. The floor is yours on audit, 2425 audit presentation.
Yes, so, good evening, Board Chair, fellow board members, Dr. James. So I'm here, and I'm going to turn it over to Shannon Dennison, partner with Anderson Smith and Wyke, and she will be presenting our 2425 audit presentation, and then we'll take any questions you may have at the end.
Chairman, Board Member, Dr. James, I appreciate the opportunity to work on the RDL State School's audit and as well as be here this evening to present the results. Before I get started, I just wanted to make one note. As you may have seen in the full audit document, it is still listed as a draft. The reason why it's listed as a draft is the federal government has to sign some documentation before any audit firm in the country is able to release any audits of federal funds. This document's typically signed in May. It has still not been signed, so we're waiting on that. As soon as that gets signed, we'll be able to release audits, and until then, we're sitting in draft form, but felt like it was important to get the information to you all as soon as possible as we're fund balance set and how everything was going. So we're proceeding with the presentations, but just did wanted to disclose that. We don't anticipate any numbers changing. The only changes we anticipate are going to be the date of issuance, and we will get you updated final copies as well as the bound copies that we typically have. Any questions about that before? Okay. Pleased to announce that the district has an unmodified opinion on the 2425 financial audit. That's the best opinion that you can receive on an audit. So congratulations to the hard work of Mr. Steele and the Finance Department as well as various other departments through the district. So excellent job. Lots of hard work went into that. Communications to the board, significant accounting estimates, these are the ones we would expect to see across every district in North Carolina. There was one added this year, and that's going to be the value of sick leave. There was a new standard that went into effect regarding sick leave that needed to be reported on the statements this year. That has been reported. However, we don't know what percentage of people will take sick time versus save it to be able to go to their retirement bank at the end of the year or at the end of their career. So that is an estimate, again, across every district in the state. We did not identify any misstatements. We had no disagreements or difficulties with management. We asked for a lot of information. We asked for follow-up information. The staff was really great about being able to get us the information, not only when we got here, but ahead of when we got here, and in a very organized way that we were able to tell, kind of get started ahead of time and tell that they had documents put together. In regards to fund balance, the general fund is going to be the fund where the bulk of the revenue is able to go that is, has flexibility for education. During the year, there was a decrease in fund balance of a little under $2.1 million. So the ending fund balance is a little over $6.9 million. As you recall, fund balance is going to be similar to what you would have as a savings account at home. That's going to be the district's pot of money that you are able to appropriate and use for the future directly related to education. Capital outlay is going to be the other area. That's going to be regarding the building and capital needs of the district. The district spent between $2.6 and $2.7 million out of the capital outlay fund balance, ending the year with a little over $7 million. Those two funds have to be used separately and cannot, one cannot cross over from the other to be able to kind of keep that delineation. Other special revenue, about $1.2 million was used. Most of that revenue is tied up specific to grants and has very specific stipulations as to how that can be used, ending the year with about $2.1 million.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Would it be okay to ask a question at this time, or, because we're on this slide?
It's up to you.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, I just don't want to break the flow too much.
You're totally fine.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Kubini.
So we have to pay attention to fund balances, right? I mean, that's an important thing, right? So how would you assess our fund balances in these various categories as being, is it low, medium, should it write spot-on, should we have more?
It's really hard to tell, and I'll kind of explain why. It's a little bit more of a vague answer, because I do understand that it's a vague answer. But the LGC, the state doesn't put out recommended fund balances for school boards. They used to put out recommended fund balances for counties. One of the challenges as a school board that you all have is the bulk of your funding comes from the state. If you look at these categories, the state public school fund being almost, you know, between 153 and 154 million, and then the federal grants at 13 million, the bulk of your money comes from the state and federal government. So if there was a percentage of spending that the state recommended, the challenge is so much of it comes from the state, and you can't carry over state funds. So it does become a little bit more challenging as to nailing down a percentage. One of the things we look at is, you know, how, how much fund balance do you have? What are you using? And what the plan is for the future, you know, are expenses, one-time expenditures that you're not, they're not ongoing salaries. Coming off of ESR, we're seeing, just kind of what we're seeing is we're seeing a lot of districts have spent some fund balance this year because the significant pot of ESR money kind of ended in September of 2025, 2024. So, you know, that ended during this fiscal year. So kind of coming off of that, you guys have also had several other grants that are getting ready to end. So really what we would say is, you know, as you're spending 2.1, you have 6.9 left. Looking at that and determining, do you want to continue spending fund balance? Obviously, it gets to a point where you don't want to, and you want to be able to have some fund balance. If state, the state changes something, if the state increases, things like retirement benefits throughout the year, if this, as the state changes salaries, sometimes you don't know at the beginning of the year. So the fund balance allows you time to react to changes at the state level as well. So I don't have a great answer for that, but it's really kind of district-dependent, I would say. Our big answer is, if you've spent more than what you have left, then there's a problem.
Is that good, Mr. Kubini? At least it's not minus 46.1 million, and I won't say anything else about who that is. So I'm sorry, keep going.
No problem. So looking at the fund balance, you had 6.9 million left in the general fund. About, between 6.6 and 6.7 is what's left that's unassigned. There's a couple of areas where you can't spend the funds from, so about 6.7 is unassigned to be able to use for future expenses. Please, truly pleased to report that the budget and the budget amendments that you all passed through the year, that we had no material overages in any expenditures. So the district was able to come in below budget in every area, and so there's no budget violations from the, from the budget that you all passed. Child nutrition and childcare, we look at a little bit differently. Rather than looking at fund balance, those two accounts are reported from an accounting standpoint on a different basis. So we recommend looking at cash to be able to see how these two funds are financially doing. And so from a child nutrition standpoint, that's going to be the school food service fund. It increased cash about $136,000. I would say, you know, we're seeing declines in school food service across the state. So to be having an increase in cash, that's very commendable to the child nutrition program. Ended the year with about five, between 5.3, 5.4 million in cash. The childcare fund spent about $94,000 in cash, has about 1.5 million left. The past several years, there's been some COVID money that came in directly to the childcare fund, so they're coming off of that as well, but they were able to build up some extra funds related to that. Pleased to report, there were no financial statement findings. We reviewed compliance with federal awards as well as state awards. Did not identify any areas where any funds were misspent. Been looking at some supplementary information. This chart goes through the state, federal, county, and other revenue that the district has received over the past 10 years. The big thing I'd like to point out here is kind of the off-white color, the federal funds. You see during COVID, those funds expanded quite a bit, and those you can see have drastically increased, decreased in 2025, and will decrease again a little bit in 2026. About 1.5 million in ESR money was spent at the beginning of 2025 that the district doesn't have in 2026. So that will continue to go down just a little bit, but not nearly as significantly as it had in the past. Then this chart goes through the breakdown of how funds were spent. As you can see, the majority of the funds were spent on instructional. System-wide support, I went ahead and put the definitions that DPI gives between instructional support and system-wide support, just because, to delineate between those. System-wide support is going to include things like transportation, so the buses, getting the kids to school. It's going to include maintenance. It's going to include, you know, if there's mowing of lawns, custodial services, any type of things. It's not necessarily just a leadership. There's a lot that goes into it that directly impacts the kids. And then capital outlay, and then other expenditures. Then this chart looks at local fund balance over the past 10 years. You can see the general unassigned fund balance was able to steadily increase while the ESR funds were available. Has gone down the last couple of years, went up just a little bit this year in unassigned fund balance. Then capital outlay, one of the reasons why unassigned fund balance might have gone up this year is the 26, 2025, 2026 budget hasn't been passed yet, so any of those appropriations. Capital outlay, again, you can see an increase, and then that is going down as well. Any questions?
So first of all, I just want to say thank you very much. It's a very thorough, well-laid-out presentation, and I definitely want to thank Mr. Steele and his team for the quality work you guys did. That was really good work. Question, comments from board members, be recognized. Ms. Sloan, go ahead.
Yes, it seems like Mr. Steele did a great job actually making your job easier. So my question is, do you plan to charge us next, less next year?
We don't plan on any significant increases next year. We plan to be relatively consistent. Mr. Steele does do a great job. We also want to take care of our employees and make sure that, that they're doing their best. But like I said, I don't anticipate, Lauren.
All right. Anyone else? Any comments? Other board members?
Chairman, I'd like to ask Ms. Dennison a few questions.
Sure.
So, you know, I engage with the community like the board does frequently. Can you explain a little bit of the audit process? Because I actually done a presentation a few weeks ago, and the, and the question was, you mean you only get audited once a year? The presentations once a year, but can you talk about the number of firms you audit, the guidelines you're required to meet? Because we've also been told, an auditor will put down anything you want. So speak to that and about what you're required to do by law and the ramifications if you didn't.
Absolutely. So our firm audits somewhere around 85 of the North Carolina public school districts. We work very closely with the state, with the LGC, as well as the school of government, since our firm primarily, our main focus of our firm is on North Carolina school boards. We have more North Carolina school boards than any other, any other clients by far. As a firm, we are required to, we have to submit our audits to the state to be able to be reviewed. We also have to go through a peer review process ourselves, which requires us to be audited. Once every three years, they randomly select various jobs. We don't know what they're going to select, and they pull it, and it's audited by another firm. We just went through that process in the spring of this year, came out with no findings and a clean report. A firm out of Louisville, Kentucky, ended up doing our, the review specifically for North Carolina school boards because... Carolina school boards because we do so many of them within the state. They wanted an expert within this, within school boards, so did look to out of state for that. As far as us auditing the school board, we come out in the spring and in the spring we look at, we go out to, we look at individual schools. So we look at the books directly from the individual schools. We come out, we select a sample of expenditures from throughout the year up until that point. We select a sample of employees, make sure employees are certified in how they're teaching. We look at making sure that they're being paid at the right level. We're looking at, you know, various things for expenditures. We're looking at contracts. We're looking at, you know, was the right amount paid? Were they paid correctly out of the correct funds? Were any funds misspent? We also look at internal controls and the district's processes to be able to identify if there's any gaps. We iden, we go through and review that the district is following their internal control processes. We also look at various, whether it be quarterly or annual reports for different grants and other grant requirements that they may require. For example, some grants can charge indirect cost. We look and make sure, you know, if that cost is being charged correctly. So we, we review the state, the state and federal government, put out compliance supplements for us of things that they want us to look at specifically for state and federal grants. So we make sure and look at those items and then anything else that stands out to us. We also, we review things shortly after June 30th. There's a few things that we review that the finance team uploads and send to us. We get a good feel of, you know, where did the district go with fund balance? Is there any need to, you know, reach out, cause of concern, reach out to the board of, you know, hey, we see, you know, big red flags at this point. At that point, we haven't delved through everything. It's just a high-level review. Then we come out again in the fall onsite and we review expenditures. We look at, we test more general, more expenditures that would run through accounts payable to cover the rest of the year as well as a period after the end of the year. We also look at kind of more payroll samples. Then we verify balances. So we do come onsite twice a year and then do other things kind of remotely. So the audit really is a year and year process between from, as soon as we wrap up one audit, we're getting started on another audit and we're starting to have documents sent over. And Adam and his team can probably attest that we don't go away. Did I hit everything?
You good, Mr., Dr. James? Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Ms. Haynes?
Ms. Dennison, you said you guys, when you're auditing, you do look at individual schools. When you come to central office, does our staff know which schools you're going to pull to review?
They would know shortly before which schools that we would be reviewing. We select a random sample, so it's not necessarily the district office that gets to select. We select the sample and we rotate that sample through. Any number can get selected. You know, if, if there's specific concerns to a specific school, we may pull that one in specifically, but in general, it's a random sample between elementary, middle, and high.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Steele.
Anyone else? Mr. Cooper, go ahead.
I think a couple of years ago, the board learned a hard lesson when it comes to selecting audit firms. And I do believe you get what, when you get what you get, you get what you pay for. And in this case, we did get what we pay for. We, we sign on with a quality firm such as yours to do our audits for the last, I think, two years now. And they're not on time. They're done with quality reports and results. So I appreciate that because that's one thing we don't need to get in trouble over and get us in trouble over for. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We, we try.
Anything else? I'm good. Thank you, thank you for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr., Dr., Mr. Steele. So next up are the school improvement plans. This is first reading and this was Ms. Kelly Cooper and Ms. Diana Jones. So we have a new person presenting with Ms. Cooper.
I don't think the, I don't have the budget as an, as a voting. The audit, is that a voting item?
We, we have traditionally in the past, I think the past couple of years, you have voted to accept the audit.
Okay, dude, so let's go through and do that. I did see the, the double star there, so yeah. So.
Yeah, I was going to say it's still a draft because of the whole federal government issue.
Yeah, just wait till it's official.
Yeah. Yeah, once we get the document, the final document, once they're able to release it, then we can just.
We'll vote on it then.
Yeah.
I'm cool with that.
It's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, sir. Now, Ms. Cooper and Ms. Jones.
So every, our chairman, sorry, Chairman Knight, Vice Chair Hayes and superintendent and members of the board. Every year, our schools are required by state statute to complete school improvement plans. The school improvement plans are created by school team, which is the school improvement team. They take these very seriously and they utilize their data. They perform what we call a SWAT to look at their strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats and develop plans that they feel will move their school forward. Do you want to say anything?
That is a pretty rigorous process, having just came out of that seat when we're sitting and looking at basically triangulating data. So we're looking at in the best interest of students in a quantitative way, but also in a qualitative way. Just what like Lake Shore was speaking of, the clubs and things, what engages kids so that it all comes full circle with it. So it is a pretty rigorous process where we scratch things that didn't work and begin generating ideas that will work.
So we have those posted online. We did have to add a few this morning that we realized had gotten left off. And so those are all posted for your review. If you've got questions as we move through the next month, if you want to read them because today is the first reading, or this month is the first reading, as you go through, if you've got questions for specific plans, please feel free to send the secondary ones to me and the elementary ones to Ms. Jones. And we'll be happy to get information for you or respond back to those as we move forward.
So. So board members, you can email them directly if you wish on this and that's cool. So you may be getting some emails.
That's fine.
All right. So Ms. Sloan, you want to make a comment?
So the school improvement plans, what are, what are our goals? Are we improving letter grades? Are we improving growth? Are we improving, what are we improving, hoping to improve?
Yes. Definitely, we would love to improve our letter grades, but most of them are generally tied to student growth. Student growth, all students can grow. It's like Dr. Knight said earlier, all students should be able to grow. So we're looking at that student growth. We do factor in proficiency, so sometimes you're going to see a proficiency goal where we'll say we want to get to 80% or we want to move from 50 to 60%. So it really just depends on the school and what the, that particular school needs, but all schools should be looking at growth as well.
Ms. Haynes?
All right. I looked, I've got like six or seven in my district and I'm not through yet. But just FYI from me, some of them have specified staff associated with the goal. And then I had some that was very generic. Is that okay?
For most part, I generally prefer that mine has specified staff.
Most of them had, yeah.
Because if you have that staff member, that staff member doesn't complete the task, but they're your accountability partner to say, did you finish it?
Right.
And they come back and report and say, hey, we haven't finished this one. They're like your little Jiminy Cricket to remind you, you've got to get those things done.
I, I tend to agree with you. And can I, I'm in healthcare and you know, we have a lot of acronyms too. And when I'm reading this, sometimes I feel like you guys assume that I know what you're talking about. And I don't. I don't know what a ARUP is, A-R-U-P. It's a little offensive to me just saying that, ARUP. No, I'm just teasing. So could, could they, the first time they use whatever that stands for, could they, could they spell it out and then put ARUP in parenthesis and then use ARUP the rest of the time?
That's excellent feedback. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We will definitely share that.
Okay. And dates, some of the dates have already passed.
Yes.
So should those be? Do we give grace if it's not completed?
I mean, the document that you have, we downloaded as soon as they told us they were finished with their plan. So those have been downloaded. Those plans get updated every month in the school improvement team. But the one that you have is a PDF that we post online. The one that they deal with is in a platform called Endastar. And in Endastar, they go in and they make changes in it monthly as they meet with their staff. That's one of the things we check because we're looking each month and my folks will tell you, I drive them insane with that because they get basically points each month if they have their two, two meetings per month are posted, they've got all their steps up to date. So those things are things that we check and report back out to them. If they're not up to date, we're prodding to say, hey, you haven't posted your things, you haven't updated it in Endastar. So unfortunately, the document you guys get is not live. That is their original school improvement plan for the year and then they update it monthly.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
The past practice for approving these school improvement plans, I'm uncomfortable with because Ms. Hayne says she's got eight district schools to look at and I have one.
Yeah, I, I.
And.
Yeah, that's just the way they, they got set up.
Well, here's why I'm uncomfortable with it because the school board approves the school improvement plans. And at the law conference last week, I was talking with fellow board members on how they do this. And I did meet one board member that does it this way. They require school principals to brief them. So I make a motion for each school principal to give the board a 15-minute presentation on each school improvement plan.
So we, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion? We'll start out yea, then nay.
Mr. Chairman, I think I'll go first.
Sure. Take a few minutes.
So I think, first of all, I, I feel that the principal's job is certainly the hardest job in the school district and they're, they're the, they're commanding officer, their school. They're responsible for delivering academic results for their school. And according to state law, we have, you know, general overview and governance of the school district. And I believe it's important that this board, in order to carry out its duty to approve school improvement plans, be briefed on those plans. As the vice chair said, they're full of acronyms, they're long spreadsheets. It's tough for us to really figure out what's important when we look at these documents. So I think a 15-minute presentation by each principal is appropriate and perhaps done outside of the regular board meeting. We schedule one or two working sessions to do that. But I feel it's important that the board be informed on each school's progress and we need to hold obviously the superintendent accountable for that progress. Thank you.
That's a, that's a yea. So do anyone in a nay side or we'll just let open? Ms. Haynes?
I'm not sure how effective that would be because I know Ms. Jones and Ms. Cooper are communicating with each one of these principals constantly and scrutinizing or not scrutinizing, but collaborating, that's a better word. I am not a principal. I depend on the district principals and these two professionals to give us feedback. And I'm not, when I go through mine, and you are welcome to go through mine, Mr. Cooperneck, my, my district schools, in fact, all of them you can. Because I think if I have a question, I will, I don't hesitate to email my, you know, you guys. Do I, Ms. Cooper? No. And I'm, I'm quite confident that we can discuss and, and figure out each of the school improvement plans and on our own within, you know, within reason, within, with your help, with our principals' help. Even, I mean, I would even, you know, if I wanted to go to my principals, I, I'm sure they would let me. So I, I'm not sure how them coming here, so you can hear, how many schools do we have? 38 principals. I'm just not sure how effective or what's that going to do?
Anyone else want to be recognized?
Chairman?
Yes?
I will. I've done it, I've done it both ways. I've sat and we've had every school present, but it was a smaller county. But the state also, so this is a state database. So it's a continuous improvement database the state adopts and doesn't really give us an option anymore not to use it. So the state accountability department looks at all the school improvement plans. Once we submit it, once you guys tell us you're good, we submit it to the state, they will review it and they will send us reminders repeatedly over certain areas like, have you thought about this or, or has this go prevalent? So it is a full-blown system. And I'm not, you know, and I've been involved in them many, many years, but there's, you know, it's, it's up to the board by all means and will do whatever you decide. But I've done it both ways. I don't know that the end game should be, what is the school doing with the people in its, in its building to improve instruction? And then how are they leveraging our skillset to help them close those gaps? So I think we've done a much better job that, in that area. I think we still are reluctant to have crucial conversations when there's a non-performing teacher. So that's one thing that we constantly talk about with principals. They come in, we look at the data, what are you going to do to improve this data? What supports do you need from central office to help you close this gap? So we're, it's an ongoing, it's, we're flying, we're building the plan as we fly. So there's not a week that doesn't go by that we're not looking at our plans. How do we change here and discussing areas that are of grave concern? But again, board's purview, we can do it either way and I, and I have. So there's pros and cons to, to both ways.
Mr. Sloan?
I'll, I'll start with the, the word accountability. We as a board, I hope, I speak for all of us, we want the very best for our kids and we want our kids to do their very best. And I, and I think at whatever cost. And with that being said, with y'all handling this and looking over these plans, I'm, I'm humble enough and smart enough to know I'm, I'm not to your intelligence. And I don't know how much I could help you with these plans except for to, to look at them and, and add some common sense, but I don't know if that's worth the time for us to, to look at all these schools.
Do about two hours.
But then I'll go right back to the word accountability. We need accountability. And I don't know if y'all want it to be on us. If we look over these plans, accountability on us. So it might benefit y'all for us, the accountability to be on us. Just my two cents.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Angel?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, I would respond to my colleague's recommendation. I, I would just need more time to think about process and how we consider how we can help you guys and support you. I do believe that standard operating procedures, consistency in practice increases the likelihood of positive outcomes. So things like how the plans are completed, what elements of the document are filled out and how they're filled out, that being uniform, what our process is as a board to conventionally evaluate that over time and go, is there something we could do to provide feedback in a? to provide feedback in a way that's more helpful to you all? And I would need more time to think about that. But, I just offer that piece of commentary, you know? Standard operating procedure doesn't increase efficiency and quality by design, you know? So, if everything is done the exact same way over time, then you're gonna have a higher likelihood of whatever outcome that you're seeking. So, all that to say, I'll think more about this. And if I have any recommendations around how we as a board could better support... Because I still, my natural reaction is the idea of the time and volume and input and qualifications and all that comes to flooding, would that be of value to Ms. Cooper or to the schools? But, at the same time, I go, well, how can we make this meaningful beyond a rubber stamp? Excuse me. Beyond a rubber stamp, which is something that, you know, crosses my mind. Sometimes that's appropriate, sometimes it's not. So, anyway.
Chairman, so my two cents, and I'm sure the teams, we know what will improve our schools. It's pretty simple. It's not rocket science. Hiring highly qualified teachers, not gonna happen when you're not paying them but $41,000. When you're in a high-need school, you're lucky to retain the staff you have. If you hire staff at the beginning of the year, by the end of the year, you may not have but 50% or 60% of those teachers because it's a high-stress school. You can't understand it unless you've ever taught children in need and been in that classroom. I can explain it to you all day long. But, when you walk in there and kids are bringing the community baggage into your classroom every day and you become a pseudo-parent, that weighs on you as a teacher. And there comes a point where your family matters also. So, at some point, you gotta say, hey, I can't do this anymore. And more often than not, March and Carrick will be one to tell you, probably one of the hardest jobs he ever had at Third Creek. And there are several times that I had to talk Mark off the ledge, you know? Because it's frustrating because you don't have the resources. And here's the bottom line, we truly want to improve education for all students in this state. We could do it tomorrow. We don't. We have shown that over the last, since 2013. We have shown a pattern of not providing an equitable education for all students. It's been about the have and the have-nots. So, fund us. Mike, you said it. You get what you pay for. I'll guarantee you, New York is 28, almost $29,000 per pupil. We're at about $8,700. I'll bet you we can do a whole lot more for $29,000 a student than we can $8,700. And you know what? We'll make it even fair. We don't need that much. Give us $2,000 more per student, and some of these schools have been persistently low-performing based on North Carolina's formula, which everybody else is thrown out with the bathwater. We can improve those schools. But, proficiency, again, thousands and hundreds of thousands pieces of data. Proficiency is your zip code and where you're born at in life. If you're lucky enough to be born in Eiffel Towers, your proficiency is gonna be very high before a teacher ever talks to you. Teacher has no impact on proficiency. That's how you're born. That's how you walk in kindergarten, prepared for school. And if you have a parent that's one parent that has to work two or three jobs, there's not a two-parent home, I can assure you, that child is not as prepared as a parent would be that has two, you know, or a school, or a family is that has two parents and has that child prepared. It makes a difference. And we've shown y'all data as a board multiple times. Our kids of poverty walk in every year, two and a half years behind their non-at-risk peers. So, the problem is, we need to catch them up before they get to us. That's called NC pre-K. That would make a level playing field come kindergarten for all kids. And I'll be honest with you, if we would fund that for about three to five years, we would find out it's much cheaper doing that than it is to try to remediate them after they leave third grade behind. But, again, the politicians control education in North Carolina. So, until they make a decision that we're going to educate all kids equitably, this is where we're stuck at. Are we gonna try our best every day to make an impact? Absolutely. And we are. You see it in this year. We've hit a home run this past year in quite a few of our schools that, and we look at growth, and Ms. Haynes, you asked this, we look at growth on every single kid. We send home a progress monitoring report on every single child that's behind weekly. So, we are telling parents, here's where your child's at. But, if they don't have the resources or the ability at home to help close that gap, there's no way we can do it unless they're with us more of the time. You put them in pre-K, and I will guarantee you, you will see a huge improvement with our students of poverty. It's just that simple. And we keep just going around, we keep circling that wagon, but don't wanna solve the problem. And again, to me, I wanna be cost-effective, put the money where it matters, pre-K. And then, we wouldn't have to be talking about schools that are middle and high schools not meeting performance measures. So, my two cents.
Okay. So, Ms. Kern, you want to comment?
Sure. Well, as you know, I'm an advocate for pre-K. Been asking for pre-K for quite some time. Acceptable wages for teachers, for that 100%. I think the whole board is. With Mr. Kubenek's recommendation, I'd love to hear if there's any information from these other boards that say this is beneficial in some way. I don't know if it's possible that a principal standing up here in front of us knows they're gonna have to be held accountable in a public setting. Maybe that'll push him a little further for accountability. I don't know. But, I would like to know more before that. And so, I would like to move at this time to gain a little bit more information and insight and table this until the next meeting and vote on it then.
Well, I could send, you know, I communicate with all the superintendents. I can just ask superintendents, organization, who does presentations and who doesn't? In a large county, it would be almost impossible to do. We're short of teetering there. In Stanley, I don't know that the board could give a lot of great input, but at least the board got to hear from each principal. It did take about three days. It does take about 30 minutes by the time you wrap it up. So, about 30 minutes per school, and they brought their school improvement team in and presented their school improvement plan. Board did ask questions. And again, I'm not gonna say it's a bad, it's a bad idea. I've done it both ways.
So, do you have anything else? Okay. So, I'll make my comments. Have you commented once already? Okay, let me go and get mine, then we'll go around the horn just real quickly one more time. Because if, are you making a formal motion to table?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so it's been a formal motion to table. So, Mr. Shatley, help me out in case I make something wrong on the way, on the do it.
No, I mean, that's fine. It'd be a motion to postpone until the next meeting or table to the next meeting. That has not been seconded.
Okay, there has not been a second, no. Do I have a second?
To postpone?
We, yeah, we have a motion to table 15 minutes. We have another motion within that motion to postpone. Okay, till the next meeting.
By Ms. Kern?
By Ms. Kern, yes. Do I have a second on Ms. Kern's motion? Not hearing a second, the motion dies. All right, whatever you say, that it does. Okay. So, we still have the motion on the floor. I'll give my comments on it. You know, we manage the superintendent. That's our job. That's what they tell us. First time you get on the board. It says it's a continuous document. Does one presentation of a snapshot, one snapshot in time of a presentation, does that give us an adequate view of what's actually going on in a continuous proving document? I would argue, no, it doesn't. It lends to, it lends to the comment, do boards micromanage or do boards macro-manage? And that's somewhat a philosophy, I think, sometimes. I'm not one to micromanage. I believe in empowering those that we hire and employ to do their best job. And then, if they don't do their job, of course, then you do that. The current system that we have is that you two basically are responsible for these plans. So, effectively, you're the ones, you're the ones that hold the principals accountable. And if something goes wrong there, then you guys would be held accountable. If I'm not correct. I think I'm correct on that.
You're correct.
So, I think there's accountability built within the system. I think within our system, there is accountability from what I know of Dr. James because if you guys weren't, Dr. James would be the one that holds you two accountable on that. And I've seen...
Well, trust me, I don't send them roses all the time. They get some push every once in a while about things to do. But, here's the other caveat that the public probably doesn't understand. Everything in accountability is set in state law. So, even if I have a principal that's not meeting performance criteria, the law tells me what I can and cannot do. And even when it comes to a low-performing district, over half the schools have to be low-performing before the state will contact the board and say, Houston, there's a significant problem. If you need us to work with you to relinquish you of your superintendent, we'll have that conversation. But, that's 50% of your schools, which unfortunately, we have across our state, several districts that way. And the state sometimes elects to bring its own superintendent in and place them, and they work directly for the state. So, all this is set in state law, and it's very intricate. So, that's why we have an attorney that knows education law intimately. So, when we have those issues, we can have that discussion on what can we do or not do.
And that's also why we hire an audit firm that understands audits. I guess what I would say, I would argue that we as the board members, even myself, I've never been at the principal level. I've taught high school six years and I've, you know, I've done R and D. And then, I went back and teach at the college level and university level. But, you know, I think to us, we can still hold, we still have accountability within this model because we get to evaluate it. We get to vote on it. Now, granted, it's a plan, it's a snapshot document, like you were saying. And yeah, read some documents. Yeah, having that might be a good thing, having those acronyms defined initially going forward. But, we still get to evaluate it. It's just not as intimate of an evaluation from a presentation point of view. I think we pay you guys good money to do your job. We pay the superintendent good money to do his job. Until I see otherwise, I believe that you guys should do your job and we should keep it as it is. That's, so I'll be voting no against the motion.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
Also, with our schools, like our targeted support schools, that's a school that missed it with a category of meeting growth, whether it's like students with disabilities or African-American or limited English proficient students. They get feedback from a state reviewer. And then, our schools who are restart schools, so you've got Statesville High, MB Mills, Third Creek Middle, West High, and Troutman Middle, they also get another review by a state restart coach. So, they're gonna have more feedback on their plan, which will go into Endastar from the state restart as well. So, there's layers of review that are happening at the state level and at the local level.
And the state comes in and does a critical needs assessment. And they check up with us frequently going, are we deploying what we said we were going to do? And you definitely don't wanna visit from the state when you're not doing that because it can get very hectic and they can penalize us in certain areas. So, we're always looking for ways to help lower the achievement gap.
So, I think we have one or two people. And Mr. Kubenek, you want to make a quick comment on the second time around?
So, I realize I'm not the most popular person right now. But, I'm fortunate to go to events where I can meet other board members and listen to what they do. And I don't think this is a micromanagement issue. State law is pretty clear, the local board of education shall approve the school improvement plans. And if I'm looking at one, and you're looking at five, and you're looking at three, and you're looking at two, and we all go back together and say, yeah, thumbs up, I don't think that meets the intent of the law. And I don't think that meets the intent of what is our duty. So, I'm fully cognizant of the time commitment this would involve. I'm fully aware of that, and I'm not happy about that either. But, I feel it is our duty, per the state law, to be knowledgeable, these plans, to be briefed on them. And I granted, there's a little bit, a lot of gobbledygook in these plans with acronyms and all kinds of other things that we don't inherently know because that's not our expertise. But, I do think, that's my opinion, I do think we are owed a brief.
Mr. Angel?
Yeah, I would just underscore that improving the plans means I'm complicit in the plan, right? And if you said to me, Ms. Cooper, this isn't helpful to me the way, you know, we're doing it, I would want you to tell me what's the helpful way and to do that. So, from the perspective of, is there a process that we can do differently as a board? I'm not saying that co-signing on what Mr. Kubenek's saying. I'm not saying I'm not co-signing on that, but somewhere in between or whatever it behooves us as a board, at least for me as an individual, to consider that. If you say, look, this is one of those areas where there's some red tape and here's how it works, right, and here's how you really can help, is what you've asked, right? You go, go send us some general feedback, and that works for you, then great. But, if there is something that we can do differently, then I'm open to considering that, you know, with more thought. So, anyway.
So, any other comments before we have the vote? I'll call the vote.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kern's motion to postpone, and we didn't go through with that motion.
Because it was not a second, sir.
So, if it fails, if it fails now, could we bring this back up and pass it again, or is it done?
Well, this is first reading.
Talking about Mr. Kubenek's motion.
Well, if you bring it, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Shatley, but if we, this is first reading, we have a second reading of it, there could be a motion made then. And then, it would have, it would go through, and if there was a second, we could go through this process again.
Correct. If Mr. Kubenek's motion fails, this is just first reading. So, I would presume that it's gonna be on the agenda next month for a second reading. And board can ask additional questions, especially after it reviewed, or have additional motions.
So, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, by all means, Mr. Kubenek was right, you have to approve them. But, if you don't approve them, they have to go back to the school, and then the school has to relook at it. If they don't agree with you, then they'll send it back to you the same way. If there's a stalemate then, then the state board of education gets involved. And so, I think the auspice is, I think some of y'all were saying it, the experts that are working on the plans are, and they're the people that's married to the plan. If I make a plan for MB Mills and I'm not there to implement that plan on a daily basis, it's not gonna happen. So, and I would think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly or Diana, you're more than welcome to come and sit on the school improvement team. Yes, I mean, by all means, I'd welcome you to come because you need to learn the process. It's very intricate, so.
Any other quick comments, anyone that hasn't spoke a second time? Cindy? Ms. Haynes?
Ms. Cooper, Ms. Jones, or Dr. James, is there a deadline to submit our school improvement plans for this school year to the state?
I believe it is November.
Excuse me?
I believe it is November. I'll have to check that and get back with you, but I believe it is November.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the law states 60 days from initial submission.
Is that's what the law states? Okay. So, I'll just, my last final comment on this, I'll just make one quick comment is that we, I think when the board decides they wanna become the superintendent, the boards tend to be not very good superintendents. And I'll just leave it at that. So, that's my comment there. So, we've had two rounds of discussion on it. It's time for the vote. So, all those in favor, go ahead. What's the vote? Yeah, I'm gonna state the motion. And if I get it wrong, Mr. Kubenek, correct me. All those in favor, we have a motion by Mr. Kubenek on the floor. It has been seconded that before we approve the state, the school improvement plans, we have each principal at each school give a 15-minute presentation to the board of that school's improvement plan. Is that correct? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
We have one. All those opposed? Nay. So, it's six to one, six to one, did you, six to one. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, Ms. Jones, you get to stay up here for a little bit longer. Constitution Day.
I have a few goodies I wanna pass out for you guys.
Sounds great. I just hope the media make sure to get some good pictures of this.
Let me give you a little background on that one in particular. Mr. Kubenek has been very gracious with ideas about Constitution Day. And that one actually came from an email from him that was suggesting students make one of those. So, I had a high school kind of jump on that idea. I did run it by him first to make sure he was good with it. So, thank you for playing along with that. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board, Dr. James. We're gonna start our celebration of Constitution Day, actually, with some information from Mr. Kubenek. He had done quite a bit of work behind this. And so, there's some feedback from volunteers and some pictures he's gonna share. And then, I have a little presentation of how it was impacting students. And then I have a little presentation of how it was impacting students across the district.
Okay. Thank you. Next, there are so many schools, I appreciate them posting their photos on, on their Facebook pages, and they're just awesome that, that they do that, and, and most of the schools have so much fun with it. So, thank you to the schools, next. So, we've, we've grown the program slowly over the last three years. We had 83 opportunities fill, total, from all the schools, so I, I'm really sorry we did not have more volunteers to fill all the opportunities, but I think the quality, the quality of what took place in the classroom, based on the feedback from the volunteers, is, was much improved this year. So, you can see, we had 35 volunteers filling 45 slots in 24 schools. Next. The signup process continues to get better every year, and you can see the vast majority of respondents found it to be pretty easy. And I appreciate that, because that makes all the difference. Just some brief comments on the signup process. I guess one of the, one of the key recommendations is, the volunteers would like to be able to speak to some point of contact at the school to help coordinate activities in advance, so having a contact person would be helpful. For a few people, they had actual technical issues with the website, I'm not sure about that, but, but then they called the school and made it happen anyway. Next. The school contacted the volunteer about 75% of the time beforehand, which was good, because we found that the advanced coordination and planning, a little bit of planning, it makes all the difference. And everyone, to a T, felt they were used effectively in the classroom, and that's, goes back to my previous comment, that all the, nearly all the volunteers had very positive experiences in the classroom. And you can see in the next slide, the vast majority of volunteers felt that their experience in the classroom was, was very good, and everyone would do this again next year. And these are just a few highlights of general comments. I would like to just give a shout out to East Aridale Middle Schools, where I went to. The principal, Lisa Brooks, and, and the eighth grade teacher, Mr. Bascher, were incredibly enthusiastic and supportive, and, and really worked with me to, to make it a wonderful Recommendations for improvement, again, like the volunteers, they would just like to work with the teachers ahead of time, or have some phone conversations. What I've also found is, too many students in a given classroom can make it kind of rough, and if you ever read to kindergarteners, like on the reading, Reading Across America Day, that's, that's a challenge. More resources for books and activities, we continue to find those, and, and those are helpful for the volunteers. And they found that the communications were great this year, but we can always get better. And special thank you to Ms. Jones, and Ms. Cooper, and Mr. Ribic, for all their terrific enthusiastic support over the years, and again, the teachers, principals, and the staff supported as well. And of course, the volunteers that, that made it happen. Here's a list of volunteers and, and present, I'd like to acknowledge Jim Waters sitting over there, and his wife Christine, Jan Wright, and I think that's it for presents, but we had all the volunteers there listed. And finally, today is the U.S. Navy's 250th birthday, October 13th, 1775, so I just wanted to give a shout out to my U.S. Navy team. Thank you.
We, why? Why do we celebrate Constitution Day? Federal law requires that all educational institutions receiving federal funds hold educational programs or events on September 17th or near. And it truly was a great opportunity for Aridale Statesville School students, just to see the framework of our government. So, I'm gonna kind of highlight schools as, I wanted to hand you some materials from, from students, but I also want to capture some of the pictures and stuff that were sent to us. So, this one's from Cottle Creek. Again, kind of reiterating what he had said, 35 volunteers in 45 slots. So, truly, there were some folks that were in multiple schools working on this. I love his hat as well. Many schools had multiple volunteers, and 24 schools were fortunate enough to have volunteers. This one is a particular shout out to Third Creek Elementary. I wanted to capture some of the amazing activities that went across Aridale Statesville Schools. There was a lot of read-aloud that is an area of opportunity for us, I do want to pour in some more read-aloud materials. And we may want to try a couple of read-alouds when we break up kindergarten, because there is not a harder job in the school system than a kindergarten teacher. So, that, that, we definitely need to kind of break that up for read-aloud for them. And the, they partnered in interactive lessons, as you can see, there was a lot of constitutions being drawn up, and there was a lot of volunteers that assisted in student-led projects. And this shout out goes to Union Grove. This one takes the cake for the adults dressing up. This is Northview Academy. So, we did have a few classes that had students dress up, but as far as the adults dressing up, Northview wins the award. This was actually a quote from one of the principals, as I was gathering feedback. Here's to building future leaders who understand the value of our rights and responsibilities as Americans, and so I just wanted to leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments from board members? I think it's really cool, I'm really glad to see it grow, and all the positive and the good things about our country, the students learning about on Constitution Day. We're gonna take a quick five-minute recess, I'm not gonna gabble us out, quick five-minute Okay, it's been five minutes, if we get the board members back up here, please.
Try to stay on schedule. Excuse me. No.
You know, I've got 100%, so don't worry about it. I got 100%.
Okay.
All righty, we'll start up again after our little break, for some unknown reason. Next on the agenda, Part E, is proposed policies to be, policies to be rescinded. Dr. Jeff James, you have the floor.
So, these were three policies, for whatever reason, I believe on, Ms. Haynes pointed these out, that they were still hanging around. Back in 2020, these should have been rescinded, and Kelly went back through her board minutes and looked at it, and it come up for the first read at the board, and I don't know what happened, but it never did come back to the table to be rescinded. So, we need to rescind these three policies to be, to get our policy manual in compliance. And the attorney can offer any other knowledge?
No, the, these three policies became outdated after the first Trump administration issued its Title IX regulations. And so, when, when you all did a complete rework of, in 2020, I wasn't here then, but I presume you did everything that was recommended by the School Board Association in compliance with the new regulations, these policies would have became obsolete at that point in time with the reorganization of that.
Okay, since it's 2020, I will blame COVID, because it caused everything to go someplace not nice. And so, we'll just call it, we'll blame it on COVID, so.
Point of information.
Yes, sir.
He said to get back in compliance, in compliance with what?
Mr. Shatley?
Your, your other policies aren't in compliance, it's just, I, I don't, these just got, they may have, you may have even removed them. It sounds like we started that process at that point in time, and they just didn't get removed from the website. But it wouldn't ultimately be Title IX.
So, they're superfluous now. In other words, they don't, they don't matter. They don't matter. Okay. Any other questions, comments? This is a voting item, so, and we can vote on this tonight, so if I have no other questions or comments, I'll, I'll call for a motion to rescind. Okay?
I make a motion that we rescind policy 1735 slash 4025 slash 7235 harassment defined, policy 1736 slash 4026 slash 7236 sexual harassment defined, and Regulation Code 1725 slash 4035 slash 7236 R, Title IX harassment definition.
So, we have a motion and a second. Do we have a second? Mr. Hope made a second, a motion by Ms. Haynes. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will not repeat everything Ms. Haynes said, for lack, for lack of time. I will just say, we have a motion on the floor, rescind the policies, as discussed by Ms. Haynes. All those in favors rescinding these policies, rescinding these policies, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Seven zero. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, point of information.
Yes, sir.
This agenda topic reminded me of our June meeting, and this is a point of information for the superintendent and board attorney, where we, where they brought up that we had about 60 or more policies that may need to change due to DEI language, and, and we were supposed to get some sort of a chart with some explanations and the school board information, and so on and so on. And so, the question really is, is what is the status of, of, of these policies that had DEI references that we were gonna potentially talk about and, and make changes to?
So, it, I don't, not sure if that's exactly a point of information, but I understand what.
It's related to policies that, that.
Basically, so you could ask, are there any other policies?
Yeah.
That would need to be possibly.
I mean, do you guys remember that conversation?
Okay, so we'll just give her a little time, we don't need to put her on the spot tonight or anything for that. Maybe. Oh, she comes up?
Okay. All right.
Because there was a lot of discussion from the superintendent and board attorney on this topic.
Good evening, you all. We did those policies, Dr. Mizell and I had a book of those policies that corrected that language already. I think it was maybe the June or July board meeting, we've done those policies already, and taken out all of that language.
Okay. So, that was completed already?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Based on that Dear Colleague letter, we did all of those.
Gotcha.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Point of information.
Yes, sir.
Did that require a vote from us?
We did in, in June, in July. Yeah. Okay. All right. Yes, Ms. Haynes?
When we voted for those, the change, all those policies, I keep a, a book of all our policies, I know I'm anal, and I do that. And when I was replacing the revised, I, this is why I found these three policies in our manual. So, I called NCSBA, and they said, actually, they said it, they were rescinded per NCSBA in October 2009, these three. So, so, the other DEI that you had presented, you and Dr. Mizell, we have revised those.
That's correct. I also gave Kelly McCary the same policies that you said needed to be rescinded, and she said, Ms. Haynes has already given me those policies, because I work in those policies all the time. So, you are absolutely correct.
And I do want to thank Ms. Haynes for being policy like that. It takes, you are a better person than I am on that. So, next on the agenda is proposed policy revision, these are first readings, and we have about nine of them, so we'll start out with Ms. Jada Jonas, web page development.
Good evening, Dr. Knight, Dr. James, members of the board. I'm presenting policy 3227, 7322, web page development. In this policy, we have just some minor changes. In this policy, we have just some minor changes just to update the language to connect with the new ADA regulations. So, instead of just website, we now have it including web content and mobile app. So, you can see those changes reflected in your policy, and so I'll take any questions.
So, anyone who we recognize to ask Ms. Jonas about policy 3227/7322, web page development? Hearing none. We'll see you next month on this. Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Shayla Savage for two different policies, policy 5024/6127/7266 and policy 6125.
Good evening again. So, my policies are very similar in their delivery. The first policy removes changes to epinephrine. I messed it up. I've been practicing all night. Say it for me.
Epinephrine.
Epinephrine. Be quiet, because they're laughing. This whole side over here, they're laughing.
We got a ringer up here. We got a nurse ringer up here.
And this is going to be on the website forever, so whatever.
Make sure to put this in the minutes, Ms. McCary.
It changes the delivery system and not just the auto injector, because now it can be a nasal spray as well. And so, the changes for both of these policies is for that change.
So, anyone who want to be recognized to ask Dr. Savage concerning these two policies and proposed changes?
Just don't ask me to pronounce the word. I can.
We will not, ma'am. That would be above and beyond your paycheck.
I have.
Okay, so we have a nurse asking you a question on this. I want to remind you.
Yes, sir.
Just clarification. These, the students who may have this order, they have an order from a physician.
That is correct.
It is not a blanket.
No, ma'am.
Order for anybody that needs epinephrine.
No.
Correct?
That is, they have an order already.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Dr. Savage, we'll see you next month concerning these two policies.
Y'all practice.
Yes, ma'am.
Right next month.
Next, we have four policies. This will be Ms. Kelly Cooper, Ms. Dana Jones, policy 1310-4002. Policy 3210, policy 3510, and policy 3620. And I think this is probably in regards to recent legislation passed. Alright, floor is yours.
Thank you. We would like to present our proposed policy revisions, first reading, 1310/4002. This is parental involvement. It adds a reference to a new state law requirement that a school receive parental permission before allowing students to share sleeping quarters with a member of the other biological sex other than an immediate family member during an activity or event authorized by the school.
You want to, we can do these individually, I guess. Just, my only, I'll just make one comment. I'm amazed we have to even, yeah. That should, that should be common sense, as Mr. Sloan likes to talk about, but it's, yeah, but I guess we need it. Anyone want to make comments or questions, concerns involving policy 1310/4002 parental permission required changes?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Not sure how to word this in today's time, but the reason for this change or for this policy, would it be because of changing gender, or would this be, is related to birth?
Not necessarily. Sometimes that, sometimes students, when they would go on a field trip, and I'll give this example with my own child. When they went on a field trip, he might would be in the room with his friend, who was a male, and his mother. But it would have been that I had to sign off to say, yes, that's okay, because my child spent the night at that house. So, if they were friends and they were going on a field trip, then if I said that was okay for them to be in the room together. That's really the only time we have that, but we really try to stay away from that even.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Now, it may be, maybe some might consider it a question of semantics, but the way this policy is written, it's written, it says parental permission is required prior to the following activity. And then paragraph 12 says student sharing sleeping quarters, blah, 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 blah. That's not what the law says. HB 805, which 115C-761110, paragraph B. It says that the governing body of the public school shall adopt a policy that prohibits students from sharing sleeping quarters with a member of the other biological sex during any activity, et cetera. Now, some of the follow-on policies that we're going to look at have this language in the policy. So, this policy says you need permission to do this, but the law says you'll adopt a policy that prohibits you from doing this unless. So, I would think that we would want to have the policy align more with what the law says that says you shall not do this unless you have this. Our policy is saying you need parental permission to do this. I think, I think there's a difference.
Okay, so what I will do, I will ask our esteemed attorney of Shatley and Campbell. You're, it's not on D.
I think it is semantics. I think what the, what the law says is, is that you'll adopt a policy that prohibits this unless when authorized by the parents or the legal guardians of a student sharing the sleeping quarters. I mean, don't get me wrong, if you want to change the way it's worded, I think the School Board Association attempted to in its recommended change here, tried to put it in a place that, that made sense. If you want to word it, I think exactly how the legislation is worded, you would have to create a new section in the policy, which, which would be fine if that's what the board wants to do. But I think the intent is, is the same, is that students on an overnight field trip, when they are sharing sleeping quarters, cannot be in the same room with another student of a different biological sex unless the parents have approved it or it's a student's immediate family member.
Yeah, because it says, like, I think you were saying, not just student, just member of the opposite sex.
Yeah.
So, that way, you don't have any issues with either, you know, people showing up, teachers or whatever. So, even like, say, my mom, if I was going on a field trip, my mom went along as a chaperone for me to, her to share the room. She would have to write something to agree to that. Is that correct?
That's correct, or like what Ms. Cooper said, if there was another, I mean, if it was just you and your mom, that would be fine. But if there was another, you know, another middle school boy in there, because that's generally sometimes when, or elementary, that's generally when parents would, would stay in the same room. Then, then, yeah, we would have to get their permission. That may be something our schools are already doing anyway, or at least in an informal way, I would imagine. So, yeah, but I mean, if that's the board's will to rewrite it.
This came from the School Board Association, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, any other comments? Any other members of the board? I have no issue with how it is. I think we trust to some extent the North Carolina School Board Association to follow state law. I think if they didn't, I would assume that, that they would have some repercussions. And this seems clear cut from my perspective. I understand what you're wanting to say, Mr. Cooper, and having it directly relate to it. But from my perspective, I'm okay with it going forward. You want to make a final comment?
Yeah, it's just when we, when we get to policy 3620. The language in that policy pretty much conforms with the state law. So, we've got two policies that aren't actually, like I said, they're not consistent in how it's worded. And so, that's how I would expect our policies to more be consistent with each other.
Okay.
I think, I think the, the policy we're looking at now, I mean, I understand, I'm looking at 3620, and it's, it is kind of worded exactly like paraphrase, but somewhat worded the way the statute is. I think what the parental involvement policy is just trying, is trying to be supplemental, is just saying, don't forget, this is when you need parental permission in order to do this. But, I mean, either, whatever the board's desire, it's, I mean, we serve at your pleasure, so we will figure it out.
Any other comments from the rest of the board? We can discuss it over email in between if we want. I'm fine with leaving it as it is, so. Okay, so let's go on to the next one.
Okay, so the next one is 3210, which clarifies references to the parent, including legal guardian and certain caregivers, and this is with the parental inspection of, and objection to instructional materials. So, it clarifies that it can be the parent to include the legal guardian and other caregivers who are legally responsible for those students. So, it says for purposes of this policy, all references to parent include parent, legal guardian, legal custodian, or other caregiver adult authorized to enroll a student under policy 4120 domiciler residence requirements. So, all of those folks can have an objection. Then it revises the process for parental review of materials to allow for an extension of time to provide the materials due to a volume of complexity of the request. So, if you're asking for a lot, it has moved it from 10 days to 20, but the principal has to let you know that. The principal has to say it's going to take a little bit more time, and they have up to 20 days to get all those materials together. It adds a reference to policy 3510. And then it adds the new state law requirements that the titles of library books at a school shall be accessible through catalog on the school's website homepage. And that parents may be allowed to identify any library book that their student is prohibited from borrowing. Then it also updates the legal references and the footnotes. So, any questions on those?
Any questions, comments, anyone on that policy change? That's again from recent legislation from North Carolina state law. Okay, Mr. Sloan?
So, I have a question, parental inspection, it says we provide a catalog of books. Is that correct from the library?
It is. Ms. Parker, you want to talk a little bit about what we're doing? Because this also is, means classroom libraries as well, so in the regular media center and then in the classrooms. We're working on that part because that's going to take just a little bit of time to get all of those uploaded. I went into a couple of teachers' classrooms this past week, and they've got the little scanners trying to scan their books in that are in their classroom library as well.
Yes, so we do have our Destiny catalog published for all public to be able to see it. The law is titled parent involvement or parent permission, but in the depths of it, it says public access. So, on each school's webpage, there's a link under parents, I think is what it's called, and then library resources or catalog, something like that. And it goes to each school's individual catalog, and that is also where the classroom catalogs will be listed as well.
Follow-up question?
Yes, go ahead.
So, you say you click on parent. Do you have to identify as a parent or?
Do not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else on this policy? This would be policy 3210.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Question from Ms. Parker. With the HB 805 passing, if I look under the section about parents' access to library books. It says you have to provide a searchable tool to search the catalog, correct? And I think I've seen that on some of the sites, right?
Our Destiny catalog.
Right, but how do you interpret where it says each school shall display its catalog on the homepage of the website? That seems to imply that the actual catalog is visible.
We took it along with the state and a lot of other districts that a link is there on the homepage. Not necessarily the whole catalog is there, because there's so much information, it would just get lost on the page. But there is a link on the homepage to that catalog.
Okay, alright, I'll, I'll go back and look, but I noticed that there were a bunch of links that were broken. I guess that's because it's in progress, perhaps?
It may be so. I know when you and I emailed back and forth, each school did not have their classroom library catalog, which is going to be a spreadsheet that's searchable. Those were not linked, but they are linked now. But each school's Destiny catalog was linked for each of their schools.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, let's go, policy 3510.
Policy 3510, policy is religious-based exemptions from school programs. It revises the policy to address new state law requirement that one, a student be excused from specific classroom discussions, activities, or assigned readings that the student, parent, or guardian believes would impose substantial burden to the student's religious beliefs or invade the student's privacy by calling attention to the student's religion. And two, to the extent of practicable, students, parents, and guardians be notified in advance for upcoming discussions, activities, and readings. And the last piece of this is three, if excused from a discussion, activity, or reading, the student be provided an alternative activity or assignment aligned to the standard course of study.
Questions, comments, anyone on policy 3510? Mr. Sloan?
Quick question. I'm not sure who to address it to.
Okay.
As far as religious exemption, with my religion, we, we do not believe in Darwin's theory of evolution. So, would our kid be exempt from that if we contacted the school in writing, and so our kid don't want to hear that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I guess, I guess where the hangup might be is, you said a substantial burden, so I don't know what that term means legally. I'd have to defer to legal on that, but it's going to be, it's going to be interesting how that happened, works going forward. But that's just something from my perspective. What's going to happen?
We've been doing this for a long time.
Okay.
Because if parents call us, even when I was a principal, if parents called me and said, I have an issue with my child reading a Harry Potter book.
Yeah.
I was like, fine, your child's not reading.
That's fine, yeah. Sounds good.
So, this isn't really anything new for us, but we're trying to make sure that.
It's just state law now.
It is.
It's just state law. We've basically been doing it in many ways. Gotcha. So, you understand the process and you know what it, okay.
And we have communicated it out well.
Good, alright. Anyone else?
Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
In the first paragraph, where you talk about parental notification. What is the process or criteria when parents are to be notified in advance? You know, how, how do they get notified? How, in advance do they get notified? What criteria do you determine? If a notification is needed, and what form do you use, meaning what method? And so forth, so what, can you speak to the process?
Really depends on the class. Because like with our health classes and our sex ed curriculum, it's like 60 days ahead of time, 60 to 90 days. So, as soon as school starts, when parents come to open house, we try to say, here are the topics your child's going to have. Here's where all the resources are. Please go peruse them, look at them, tell us if you don't want your child to participate. For our English Language Arts, we have asked that all schools have a list of their readings and required readings, and that they send those home to parents. And say, here are the things that we're going to be reading in class. If you have an issue, please let us know, and we'll give you a different topic. When it comes to science, we really haven't given like specific topics, but we can share, we always share syllabus. And so, if a parent looks at a syllabus and said, that's a unit I really, or a topic that I really don't want my child to take place in, all they have to do is let the school know, put it in writing, and let the school.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so, next, I guess, would be policy 3620, last one for you, you guys. Extracurricular activities and student organizations.
Alright, this one is similar to the one that we had above. And this one is in accordance with the new state law. It prohibits student sharing sleeping quarters with anyone of the other biological sex during any activity or event authorized by the school, unless the member of the other biological sex is the student's immediate family member or the parents of all students sharing the sleeping quarters have provided written permission to the school. And then it updates the legal references and adds a footnote.
So, any questions, comments on this one? Go ahead, Mr. Sloan.
Biological sex, would it be at birth?
Yes, assigned at birth.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
Obviously, these come from the HB 805 bill that was recently passed, but what is, this is maybe for the attorney, what is that reference that says GS 12DAC-3.3? I tried searching for that, and I couldn't seem to know what that means. Because you referenced the law in the reference, the specific 115C article.
You're not going to find the law yet. If you, if you just go look in the general statutes, you're not going to find, 12-3.3 was also in House Bill 805. And so, that was where they defined biological sex in that statute. There's some other definitions in that statute too, but There are some other definitions in that statute too, but if you remember, House Bill 805 dealt with lots of different subjects in regards to women's rights and things of that nature, other than school-related issues. And so, under 12-3.3, it is talking about the official recognition of two sexes and administrative rules, regulations, or public policies of the state of North Carolina. And it applies certain definitions, and one of those is biological sex, basically meaning the way it's defined in the law, the biological indication of male and female in the context of reproductive potential or capacity, such as sex chromosomes naturally occurring, dot, 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 dot. So that's where, that's just the definition of biological sex that the policy is using.
So that's not an actual thing you can find?
It will be. So it's in the law. It just hasn't, go to House Bill 805, it's the first part of House Bill 805.
Okay.
It just hasn't been. If you go search for 12-3.3, you know, it takes a while for all those House bills to get incorporated on the General Assembly's website. Probably takes several months. So look for it in the bill, though.
So, hearing none, we'll go on to the next one. The next is Policy 3320. This is about school trips and Dr. Billy Berry. You were up for the next two.
So, Policy 3320, the change is actually the same change in a couple of the policies that they just presented. The, it prohibits students from staying with anyone other than someone with their biological, other than their biological sex on a school trip unless permission has been granted to the school ahead of time.
Any other comments, questions, concerns for this, for Dr. Berry? Hearing none. Dr. Berry, last one for you, is Policy 4120, domicile or residence requirements?
Policy 4120, the changes in this or in the subsection that discusses the remote enrollment of children of military families, the requirements have always been that we would enroll military families pending transfers. All, or most of the changes deal with those who are separating from active duty within a 12-month period. We are now required by law to enroll those students as well.
So this is really just for military fam... How many do we, you think this would affect here? Any idea?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to hypothesize or take a swag at it.
I looked over at Ms. Elliott and she shook her head, so I don't think we want to hypothesize. We can certainly find out for you those.
Just, yeah, as long as we just take care of them, because military needs to be taken care of.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, I don't hear any other comments from anyone else. So, Dr. Berry, we'll let you off the hook here and we'll go to the next Part G. This is a voting item, proposed policy revisions. This is second reading, and this is the one about cell phones. This is use of cellular, other potential wireless communication devices. Mr. Dean Shatley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, after last meeting, I got the notion that it was the consensus of the board, at least at that time, to define the prohibition of communication devices during the school day, that it would be the entire school day. And so I went back and I made those revisions. You'll see that in Paragraph A, it's in red. So we've defined the school day as basically beginning the first class period of the day to the last, to the end of the last class period, as listed on each school's established schedule. So we tried to, tried to, you know, define that in a way that would meet the needs of every school, schools that use bells and schools that maybe don't use bells. And then you'll also note, I did provide, if you change your mind, you want to talk just about instructional time, I've defined that in the footnote. Obviously, we would remove that footnote if you, for whatever you approve. And since we are defining the school day, I just moved the definition of a wireless communication down to definitions. I just took that language that was up in the preamble paragraph and just moved it under that section. The one thing I added too was some language School Board Association had that I thought was good. If you're going to define it for the whole school day, it's probably good to have some language about what you're supposed to do with your wireless communication device. And so this, under Paragraph B, it does talk about, you know, you need to store, you need to store your device in your locker or your bag. I didn't define bag, so it could be a purse or a bookbag, or in accordance with a storage plan developed by the principal. So if the principal gives the teacher, "Yeah, you can use one of those shoe racks on the back of the door," or if they go and buy some expensive mechanism, which I don't necessarily expect them to do, but something like that, that they have a special plan developed where the storage can be done in a safe and orderly fashion. Dr. James, if you go down to the middle of B, which is on the top of the next page, Page 2 of 3, you'll see in highlight there a sentence that I added. This is under the exceptions for the rule. High school principals may permit students to use devices during the student's lunch period. This was based on feedback from Dr. James after, and the administration, after talking with school administration. Certainly, the board, that is the board's prerogative. It was, according, and Dr. James is welcome to speak on this, but it was, middle school and elementary school were fine for the whole school day. The high school principals did make, and I think maybe even the students too, I think you had a student.
Yes, we had student advisory, parent advisory, and of course, there are some principals here. And before the, this is a very important policy that will impact high schools greatly and parents greatly. So definitely, we have three principals here that want to at least comment to the board on the nuances.
And I would like, I would like to have each one of them if they would say something short, if that's okay with you guys.
Y'all asked us to do some surveys. So Dr. Savage has some survey materials. And Dr. Berry, we meet with advisory, we meet with advisory committees, and in those, we have parents and students. And believe it or not, the students at high school, you know, gave us quite a few reasons, and I think the principals can explain it. If y'all guys want to come on up and then take turns giving your opinion.
And I will say, I've got some emails/texts from a couple of other principals. If it behooves the board, if it's okay with the board, I'll just kind of read or paraphrase from what they say.
Well, these guys, you know, any policy we have, these guys have to attempt to enforce it. So, and if it's not enforceable, it's sort of a moot point to have the policy. And even if it's halfway enforceable, so these guys wanted to share some thoughts on the nuances they'll face at high school. Elementary, middle, 100%, you know, no phones all day.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, board members. My name is Nicholas Allen, I'm the principal at Lake Norman High School. I appreciate your time tonight. Yeah, our students, we, and all of this, and I'll let them speak their own schools, but we face a lot of modern problems. At my school in particular, I have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of students who are coming on and off campus all day. These students, especially at lunchtime, rely on their phones to communicate with their parents for transportation later, to communicate with their jobs that they're having after school, to check their schedules. I have students that use their cell phones daily to do their work for college classes, for whatever reason. They may have trouble with their computer or whatnot. What I don't have a lot of is problems in this current setting. So far this year, we have had 57 incidents of cellphone illegal usage. And you think, wow, 57, but that's out of almost 60,000 opportunities when you count the number of students I have per day and then the opportunities that are there. You know, we're able to police this the way we have it set up. You know, when I talked about this with my admin team, you know, my smallest lunch is about 425 students in a room with approximately five to seven adults on a day where nothing is going off plan. How to enforce this policy? If every kid in that room gets their phone out at the same time, what are we to do? I can get five, six, seven at a time, but I won't be able to get them all. If I was to, you know, process every kid in the cafeteria, it would take approximately 20 hours of work for us to contact all these parents if we were to write up those kids for that. It's just not a feasible component. I did bring this, you know, this is what we use for those rare times we have an incident. We don't even touch kids' phones anymore. If your phone is something that you get out inappropriately, each teacher has one of these, you're just going to place it in this lovely box, seal it up, and we let you have it. And there's only two of these in the building that open it up. It's real simple. You can keep it with you all day. We don't want to touch it. We're not going to break it. You know, we've had to use these things a half a dozen times this year, the way that it is. So I would appreciate consideration for letting students have those phones at lunch and keeping the happy medium that we have. You know, we don't have issues with them getting out in the class right now because they get that break at lunchtime. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If it's okay with the board, I'll wait. If you want to ask questions of the principals till they've all presented. Okay.
Good evening, board members. My name is Ben Johnson, Principal, West Iredale High School. I first would like to say, what we tried to do over the summer when we saw this coming, the bill and everything being passed, we just tried to educate our students and our parents and tried to go through like the jargon and things of like, what is instructional day? What are some things we can do to kind of mitigate the factors of it being punitive? So, once, and we got the word out as early as we possibly could. So, met with my sit team, they came up with the criteria of something they felt comfortable enforcing. That was the first step. The second step was to push it out to the staff in our first meeting, and we had everyone vote on it, on what can they enforce. And then, open house, we had literature, I think, that, Mr. Hoke has a copy of it, but we actually put that in the parents' hands, a physical copy, and it spells out everything throughout the day. Now, we all came to a compromise as a staff of, we're going to let them use their cellphone devices during lunch because at that pivotal point, around 12 o'clock, at that point, you know, we, I'm hard on my staff and my coaches, things of that nature, about communication with parents and communication with students. Because what we don't want is that student being stranded at school, knowing that they cancel their practice because they don't always hear announcements during class change because you try not to disrupt class. So, we tried to make sure that we keep open lines of communication all the time. So with that, I know that Nick gave some data. And right now, with our policy enforced the way it is, where it stands now, is, you know, cell phones come out at lunch, before school, after school. Right now, I think we have 16 minor incidences, minors, and most of those are freshmen. And then we have, and then we have one repeater, and that was a student that transferred in. So, it's not an issue at the school, what we have going on right now at this point. Now, again, and if it does become an issue, they simply turn it into the office. I don't have the nifty device that Nick has, but they turn it into the office, we put a tag on it, we have a huge drawer at the bottom, and they can pick it up at the end of the school day. We don't hold phones, we don't, you know, hold load night and things of that nature. We give it right back to them because we know, in a lot of situations, that students need them. We do have, we also have students that are on and off campus various times of the day. And again, you know, what, if we restricted that cellphone use from the beginning of the day to the end of the day, what we're going to have is, we're going to have a huge disruption and we have a bombardment of students trying to use one phone in the main office all day long. And you talk about class disruptions, that's a major class disruption in this in itself. So, I just hope you just consider, you know, what we've talked about so far, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Knight, board members, Dr. James. If you don't know me, my name is Derek Wishon, the new principal at North Iredale High School. Appreciate you having me this evening. Just want to kind of not repeat a lot of what was just said, but as far as the policies that are already in place, that Ms. Diana Jones and her staff graciously done before I took this seat as principal at this school, a lot of the policies are in place that are in parallel with the two before me that spoke regarding the situation. Trying to give you a different perspective, thinking about, you know, the topic of school improvement plan, one of our goals aligns to building positive relationships with our students and our parents within the community. And right now, based off the observations that I've had in the 21 days that I've been there, that is present currently in the lunchrooms, given the same policies that are present today. I see administrators, I see staff members, teachers, custodials, working day in and day out with our students in a positive way, and that's something that we are really reserved to seeing that go backwards, which is, again, aligned to what we're trying to progress towards, building that sustainability within that community at our school of North Iredale. Giving you some data as far as our perspective from our school, right now, we have about 260 occurrences of discipline that have occurred so far. 33 of those relate to cellphone usage. That gives you about 1.3% of situations that regard this situation. And right now, I also believe, and our staff believes, that this is not a situation that we are focused on currently. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll just quickly refer the board to some, what I've got. I got an email from Chad Parker at Statesville High, just quickly, he says, "I agree with everyone that students' cell phones, that students' cell phones, educational environment, learning education, learning environment should be placed in their bags or other teacher-directed areas." I also agree that staff should follow the same process because, you know, you're modeling behavior. What I would disagree with some is the access of cell phones during lunch or transitions. Many students around the district take CCP, that's not Chinese Communist Party, that's Career and College Promise classes. And this may be the only time access updates from their classes. Additionally, many students are secondary caregivers, something you guys are both, within the home, it's time to check work schedules and updates from families. Second, depending on the size of school monitoring, forcing a cellphone policy, you mentioned that, I don't want to, he basically reiterates that. And he just said, "With increased responsibility, many of our students are now tasked with banning cell phones and like, during lunchtime, this pinch will make school students' relationship adversarial," which is what you mentioned at North Iredale. That was from Mr. Parker. And from Mr. Little, Principal at South Iredale, he said, "During instructional time, we don't allow them to use cell phones. We have them, have things in place to monitor as well as student consequences for that." He said, "We do let them use them in non-instructional." I think currently, it's been talked about just having open during lunch, though. It's been what was mentioned in the policy there. "With our lunch area so spread out, it'd be not very trying to police it. Not mention, we have 12 buildings that students navigate through, so that as well would be hard." Just want to give you some brief feedback. So, that's feedback I've had. So, I'll open it up to comments from board members. Comments from board members. Mr. Angel?
I just want to make the motion that we approve this policy as outlined with the revisions from Mr. Shatley to also include the high school principal's permission to use the devices, for students to use the devices during their lunch period.
Do, we have a motion on the floor to accept the motion as posed with principals being able to use devices, principals allowing students if they wish, because you could always take them away if they don't get a little rowdy. Take them away if you need to. 20-minute lunches, you can go down to 15 or take the phones away. But if you decide, you can let them use it during lunch. We have a motion on the floor for that. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Hoke. Any comments, questions concerning the motion? You want to make any comments, yea or nay? Yea for your motion?
Yeah, I don't think anything regarding the motion means that we can't come back and revisit this if we feel like there's a, you know, a need to. Nothing's ever set in stone, but I think it's important that people closest to the problem are closest to the power. I respect the advocacy that's being done by this leadership team, as well as us taking all this seriously too. I think this is a good compromise and we'll push this all forward in the direction we want to go.
Mr. Shatley, you had a comment.
I apologize. When you asked me to go over the revisions, I forgot just to make you aware, under C, Mr. Kubenick had asked for some language that was really good, and so I added that to C, although that was maybe a little bit of a different place than where Mr. Kubenick had suggested, but you'll see it in red, it just says, "Absent and authorized exception, displaying or having a wireless communication device turned on is the standard of determining a policy violation." So, that's just basically saying that that's ultimately the policy violation, is having it out.
Having it out or?
Yeah.
Or having it turned on?
Yeah. Not that we, I think we're going to go be the, check people's bags, see if it's turned on, but just that, that just, I think, gives administration the ability to enforce the rules that they need to enforce, absent the exceptions.
Okay. Mr. Sloan?
Yes, I was, I was completely prepared to vote against no cellphone use through the whole day, lunch included. But I do want to take in consideration, I do want to take into consideration my new North Iredale principal here that doesn't want it. But we're often told we need to trust the experts, so I want to know what the experts say about a child turning his mind off and on to electronics if he has to turn his mind on to those electronics during lunch. I guess I should say, he gets to turn his mind on to electronics during lunch. And also, the social aspect of it, because I've seen kids sitting, like me and Mr. Dean right here texting each other, when they could be talking to each other. And kids need to learn to talk.
I will say, go ahead.
I'll say one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know, I know what you're thinking, but if you visited, and I'm sure, I can speak for the rest of them, but if you visit West Iredale High School's cafeteria, the interaction is astronomical. I mean, it's at the roof because they're not just sitting there looking at a video or whatever, they're discussing things, they're talking about things, they're talking about things that's going on in the world, they're talking about sports. world, they're talking about sports, they're talking about anything that comes across the news feed. So, I mean, not only are they talking about just things that's happening in West Idaho, they're talking about things that's happening across, across the world, because that's what shows up on their device. So it doesn't, it doesn't downplay or mute, you know, the students where you think they're just sitting there not paying attention to each other. They, they're interacting because, again, they don't have very many times where they can interact throughout the course of the day. So they, I mean, it's, it's a lot going on during the cafeteria. Trust me, it's loud.
And I'd like to speak to your, your point about accessing that device and getting back and forth. I think our students are highly adept at shifting between various mediums right now. They're so used to technology. I would, you know, pose that it's almost like a mental break for them, you know? They're so used to having their phones all the time. And then to be in class and to be held without it, you know, to be able to access it, it's almost like, oh, okay, for this 20-minute stretch, I can do this, maneuver with my phone, and then I'm okay to put it back away. I worry about keeping it all day for them. How many are going to be able to, to fight the urge to just check it at some point in time?
I can only speak as an old person, but I can turn my phone on, well, it stays on, but I can look at my phone before I go to bed and look at the websites that I like to look at, which is Gunbroker and this and that. But anyway, it takes me a while to turn that back off and go to sleep. Sometimes I can look at my phone, and I'll think about it for 20 or 30 minutes. Will that spill over into the classroom after lunch?
Evidence shall not. Our students, especially, you know, the ones that have grown up with this their whole life, I hate to admit it here, you know, on the record, but they're more adept, you know, at this than we are. Yeah, I'm like you, I might read an article and sit there and, you know, need to process that, but they consume information at such a rapid pace, and their attention span is able to move back and forth in items and process it in a way that I think those of us who might be just a little bit older, you know, struggle to do.
Not everyone does it like that. I think, I think I can process pretty fast.
And if I may, Mr. Sloan, I would, before this policy was in place and everything that was set forth, as far as the rules and regulations that were concrete for our students, I would have agreed with you. I would have said that this is to where kids have become addicted to this, to this social aspect of, I've got to be here. But I've, I've been reluctant to say that I believe I was wrong on that aspect of it as far as being able to observe what I've seen with this policy in place. Kids are not needing that as much as we anticipated them needing it. You can walk through the halls right now as they're working on projects. When used to, you would see them kind of working in tangent with a phone and, and writing at the same time. That's not present right now. And it's, it's really, really reassuring to see the positivity moving forward with this process that all of our schools are having in place, to see some good change out of this. Now, yeah, at times, we are at a new day of age where kids, they want to have it on them. But as you walk through our cafeterias, you do see some positive interactions socially, using verbiage language with, within others and, and their, and the role models, which are their teachers. So that's been a really cool thing to see.
Mr. Sloan, anything? Okay, okay. Anyone else? Mr. Kubinik, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for sharing your thoughts. I really appreciate it. I was, I was very surprised, like Mr. Sloan, to see that line added about the high school cafeterias. And I'll share with you a few things that 95% of teachers agree that cell phones are harming student mental health. I spoke to several North Carolina state legislators who passed this bill. I spoke to several of them and to some of them in our county. And I asked them what their intent was when they wrote the language in the bill. And the majority opinion from those I spoke with felt that it was a bell-to-bell thing. Student doesn't have access to it whatsoever during the school day. That was their intent in speaking with a handful of legislators, this piece of data. As a, I guess as a, as a, Mr. Sloan, you asked about what do the experts think? Well, if you've read this book, Glow Kids, and I know the superintendent has, Dr. Nicholas Carteris, who steals specifically in screen addiction, and he treats students who are addicted to heroin in the form of being addicted to screens. If you go to his website, you'll see three short videos, and they'll bring a tear to your eye when you see what happens. I had a education town hall last year, and two teachers from one of the high schools came to the town hall and told me about student mental health crisis going on in her high school students. And I recently spoke with an assistant principal, and I'll use the pronoun "he" not to specify whether it was a woman or a man, but he stated that he sees in his school significant problems in students lacking social skills, social awareness, and having developmental delays and delays in social development. Are screens contributing to that? Well, according to this doctor and other prominent writers on screen addiction like Jonathan Haidt, this is a huge problem. The, is this pervasive use of screens contributing to, you know, some of the academic gaps we have in our school system, probably? And I, I would find it really shocking to walk into your cafeteria with 400 students to find 400 faces immersed in a screen and not talking to each other. Now, you've shared accounts of that actually not being the case, and I'm really hopeful. But I know we, the school district, cannot solve all the societal problems. I get that. And I know the students that walk in your door, walk in with a lot of baggage that you struggle with every single day. I get that. But I also see, I also see the effect that what we have done to our kids, we adults have done to our kids. And then we have to go out and get $17 million grants to pay for mental health behavioral therapists in our schools. So I was going to, I was going to amend this policy and make a motion to just take out that line about use in the cafeteria. I probably get voted down. But I came into this meeting believing that because of the, you know, I'm no, I'm no doctor, I'm no expert, but I've done some reading, okay? And I'd encourage you to read this book. But I won't make that amendment. I'll, I'll, let's give it a shot with, like my fellow board member here says. And I think we, the board, should not be so wed to a given policy. In fact, I believe we should make policy, knowing that if it's, you know, not working out, we make some changes. So I'm counting on you all and the other, you know, principals to give us that feedback. You tell, you should provide input to any policy that we do. And so I hope you'll come back to us, even maybe before the end of the school year, and say, hey, here's how the policy's working, here's what tweaks we could do. Right? I would appreciate that. And then final point, is the state, the law that was written on this, House Bill 959, not only refers to cell phones, but like Apple Watches, right? It also refers to school-issued devices, right? So we shouldn't be using school-issued devices to babysit students, right, during free time? Right? We want students to be interrelating with each other. We've got to do that. And I would appreciate all that you can do to make that happen. So when those kids walk across the stage and they shake my hand, they're confident and they're ready to take on the world. I want to see that fire in their eye. And it's not always, it's not always there. And I wonder. But I'm counting on you to make that happen. Thank you. And you're free to address any of my comments, if you wish.
I can keep going. Let me, we could get maybe some others, if you want to come back to it on that. Anyone else comment? I guess, okay.
So each one of you guys, since the start of school, the students have been able to use their phone during school, right? This year, this year?
During lunch, yes.
During, what did I say?
During school.
Oh, I'm sorry, during lunch. So this, the way this is written now, if we pass, there won't be any changes to your academic day, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
We even discussed, my staff discussed, like during class changes, because it's a five-minute window. But we voted that down because what that does is now, the teacher's on the front line. You see what I'm saying? Now the teacher's the one going, put your phone up, and then that's when things escalate. And I didn't want to put my teachers in that situation. So that's why we just, we all agreed on, on lunch.
My only comment, in some ways, if you guys know my background in physics, physicses can be theoretical. In theory, I would, you know, it's understandable to be off during the day. Engineering says, how do you actually use physics to actually solve real-world problems? You guys have to solve real-world, real-world problems concerning this. So using the concept of reducing screen time, which I think was the basis for the law and everything, and to limit distractions, you're doing it within, with a process, with a method that actually gets, gets, it gets to the gist of why we're doing it, and why the law was passed, I think. But it has, I mean, cell phones are, you know, if we're trying to take these kids and these young adults, and they're young adults, because 14 to 18, 100 years ago, was a whole lot different than 14 to 18, 200 years ago. I mean, we don't, we know the history. These are young adults. We're trying to model behavior for them, to teach them how to have this behavior. So you, you got to give them a little bit, because like, my kids both, I'll work jobs in high school. And then they're maybe going to Mitchell or coming here and things happen in classes. To me, that's the engineering of, of how you guys on the front lines have to make sure it happened. The idea is good, I think, but the engineering is how you actually apply it. And I think that's what you guys are doing. I will be voting for the policy as it is posed. So we have a motion. Any more, go ahead. We'll take a second round discussion, and we'll stop.
What about early colleges, early college high schools? Are they, they're subject to this, right?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And of course, they venture, those students probably travel three different sites. So they're on, they're at the early college, and they're at traditional high school for courses, then they're going to Mitchell. And some of the data I gave the board, we have about 7,000 high school students, out of that about 50% drive. So they're either coming in after lunch or leaving at lunch to go to a Mitchell class. So there's a lot of movement that typically wasn't when we were in school because of all the choice programs. So yes.
All right. Unless there's any further discussion.
One more question?
Yes, sir, quickly.
For the principals, do you kind of view this permission during lunchtime as a kind of a blanket permission for all students? Is that how you see it?
All students have access, if that's what you're referring to. I'm not sure that directly.
I mean, you're essentially going to implement a policy or procedure that says, during lunchtime, you can use your phone?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And so that's kind of a blanket permission, but would you foresee using that as a disciplinary measure for some student for some reason, and you'd restrict?
Yeah, individual students who violate policy are always subject to, you know, specific consequences that relate to the issue. So a student who misuses technology, just as if they misuse their school-issued laptop, you know, we would remove that laptop from the student, depending on the, you know, the issue that they created.
Okay.
I think cell phones could be the same, you know, type of thing. With, with all policies, you know, we use those, and it's a balance that we create with our, our students. Right now, you know, it's symbiotic for everybody. They have their, their time with their phones, use them appropriately, and then we can focus on learning in the classroom. But if that gets out of balance, then we certainly reserve the right to adjust that as we see fit, to ensure that we're providing the best possible learning environment for our students.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, you want to make any comment, or is he?
No, he said it perfectly. Yes.
Yes. All right. So I'll call for a vote. All those in favor accepting Policy 4318 as written, and from the motion from Mr. Kevin Angel, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Seven zero. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Policy 6340, Transportation Service Vehicle Contracts. Mark Schenkerick, my favorite construction guy. I like him better.
Good evening. I've got a policy here to present to you. We discussed this last month, Policy 6340, Transportation Service Vehicle Contracts. Real simple, just made a couple revisions here. One, where it referred back to Policy 7100, and then also added some legal and cross-reference updates in a footnote.
Any questions from Mr. Schenkerick? This is a voting item. Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve Policy 6340 with the revisions as outlined by Mr. Schenkerick.
We have a motion and a second, second by Ron DeHoke, motion by Kevin Angel for accepting Policy 6340 on the Transportation Service Vehicle Contracts with revisions. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor accepting Policy 6340, Transportation Service Vehicle Contracts with revisions per the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Seven zero.
So Chairman, while Mr. Schenkerick's at the mic, can you just give a quick update on Weathers Creek? There seems to be experts in the community that are evidently judging how, where the project's at. So from the horse's mouth.
Yes, yeah, we're progressing on time and on schedule right now. We had a couple rain days earlier in, in the, a few months ago, but we've had a pretty dry weather here as of late, and so everything's meeting all of our milestones as scheduled. We had a big concrete pour last week. We'll have another one either at the end of this week, maybe next week. We're starting to go vertical. Once we go vertical and, and kind of get out of the ground, then the weather days don't impact us as much, and we can, you know, ensure that we stay on schedule. So everything is progressing as it should. You're welcome to come out there anytime and, and take a tour of, of the area there and see the progress we've made.
Okay. Is okay, take a quick question on it, just kind of quick, since it's not on the agenda, but go ahead.
Way under budget.
Yeah.
Places that we can take some money back and, and value engineer where we can, but it's going to be a beautiful school.
All right. Go ahead. All right. Thank you, Mr. Schenkerick.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the Board Operating Agreement. We had a, and I'm reading this from the minutes from last time. We had a motion was made and seconded to approve the Board Operating Agreement, not as a policy, but as an agreement. And it would end in November 2026. The new board in December 2026 can do what they wish, what they decide with the board agreement. And a motion by Cindy Haynes, seconded by Ms. Anita Kern. We didn't take a vote. There was a motion to postpone in the last month. There was a discussion, maybe we could negotiate some possible changes, try to get a larger majority if possible. I was, I think there was just some miscommunication. I was waiting to hear some, to hear any revisions. I didn't hear any, I sent out an email at the end of last week saying, hey, anybody got any revisions? And I was, I got a response, well, you know, we were waiting for you to do that. So I think there was a little bit of miscommunication there. I, you know, we can do that during this meeting if we decide. We would have to, if there are any revisions, they would have to go through the motion process and go through all that. But currently, we have a motion on the floor. It was, it was postponed, so we'll go through and have discussion again, and we'll go from there. So discussion on Board Operating Agreement, on the motion. Anyone? Okay, Mr. Sloan.
It was, in my opinion, when I listened in last week, that we had some disagreement on.
Last month, you mean?
Yeah, last month.
Yeah.
Had some disagreement on, on the agreement. It seemed to me that legal advice was, if it didn't look like it was going to be close to a unanimous vote, that it really wouldn't serve a purpose. And, and then it was voted to postpone, and I believe the words was, we would hammer it out, you know, between the meetings. And you say it's a miscommunication, but... And you say it's a miscommunication, but we didn't get any communication until Friday, which is one day, one business day before our meeting. So we haven't hammered anything out. And I'm still voting against it.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. I'll get you next.
I viewed, similar to Mr. Sloan's thoughts, this is your initiative.
Yes, sir.
And I was expecting, as the leader of this board, it to be your responsibility to lead on this and reach out to board members for further input and compromise. I mean, the burden is on you. I mean, I was hoping that I would get a phone call that said, hey, Mike, this is Doug. What do you say? We get together for a cup of coffee and talk about this procedure and work through some things and get some compromises. That call never came. I'm very disappointed. And I'm also likewise throughout this whole year. I was hoping that there would be reach out from the board chair to board members. And those calls never came. As the board attorney discussed last week, last month, many of these items are in policy, and I support those a hundred percent. I support every policy. I support the Constitution. I support our code of ethics. Those are the things that unify us. And it was also said that a board member, you know, coming on the board doesn't know expectations, doesn't know how things go. Well, if they don't know that, they had no business running for school board. They should have done some homework, some preparation in the board meetings, look at policies, and they would have an expectation of how things work. Most of this is redundant in policy, and the other items that are not in policy, I don't wish to have them used as a cudgel. I think our code of ethics sets the standard for our conduct. And as a self-governing board, we should be held to a high standard. We've seen over the last three years, those standards have not been enforced. We've seen multiple, multiple violations of policy and our code of ethics. And board chairs did not self-govern the board appropriately, in my opinion. This document will serve no additional purpose as our policies and our code of ethics already provide that guidance. But if we're not going to have our own self-governance, then that's a problem.
Ms. Haynes.
I appreciate your, the comments from my fellow board members. I really do. And I wasn't privy to this board, the Board of Education, in the past three years. I was on it twenty-fourteen to twenty-seventeen. But I listened to the community. I did. I listened, and there was, there was feelings that the Board of Education needed to get back to decorum, to focus on our mission, which is students and teachers and providing a basic education for every student. And you're right, Mr. Kubinek. I agree. The code of ethics. I love the code of ethics policy. And if previous boards had abided by each and every one of those policies, I think we would be at a different moment. This board operating agreement, it's, it probably has no teeth. I just think it's a reminder that we, as a board, we need to play pretty with each other, okay? We need to do what we are elected to do for every student that we serve, every parent that we serve, every teacher. So I'm not going to reiterate the words I said last month. But I will be voting for this because it's time to get us in order, us being the board. And it may not, it may not be changed per se. I think we are. I agree with Ms. Kern. She said, I think we are in a good place last month, something to that effect. I agree. So let's, we beat it to death. I'm going to vote for it. And I'm going to work with each and every one of you guys and lady and for the betterment of our school district. And I appreciate every one of you because you bring different viewpoints, experiences to this board, and I thank you.
Anyone else? I'll make a couple comments on my own, and then we'll, unless I hear any other comments, I'll call for a vote. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none. Yeah, I brought it as a way for hopefully we can have a reset. We can look backwards or we can look forwards. I'm a big believer in looking forwards. Learn from the past, go forward and do what's best. And I think having credibility in our community is, was a big thing for me as I became chair of the board to really work on. That's one of the reasons I established Legislative Committee. And I try to run the meetings in a way that we can show we're credible and professional. This is just a reminder, hopefully we can all agree. It sounds like we won't, and that's okay. But this is agreement on way we will act and we will interact with each others. We're going to make mistakes. And, you know, forgiveness and grace are very much important concepts to me. Grace especially because I think I definitely need it. I think we all need grace. But I think it's a good thing. I wouldn't have tried it. I wouldn't have put it on there and tried to get it passed if I didn't think it was worthwhile to help things going forward. And I'll give it a shot and we'll see what happens. And that's what you, that's what you do. You try to make things better and you, that's what I try to do anyway, is try to make things better. Do, just take my best shot at it going forward and go from there. So hearing no other comments, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the board operating agreement as opposed, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
We had two, so it's five to two.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, please.
It's, I, yeah, what's it concerned?
The board member agreement.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Mr. Jermaine, so, yeah.
As a show of good faith and a sign that our board is coming together and getting along better, I'd like to make the motion to expunge or remove from the record the recusal of Mr. Kubinek.
For what point? I mean, I guess, recusal when? No, yeah, go ahead.
As a show of good faith, the sign of a board coming together and getting along better, I'd like to make the motion to expunge or remove from the record the censure of Mr. Kubinek.
Okay. I guess I'd have to refer to legal on this. One, I don't know if we can do it because I'm not sure how that works or if it's even possible. That's.
I don't know if there, is there going to be a second?
I don't know. Do we have a second for the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As a point of order, I don't believe you can make a motion to rescind a censure.
Well, if there's a second, I wasn't going to answer the question.
Okay, do I have a second, I guess, is my first, my first point on this. We have a second.
So, I mean, I don't think I've ever been faced with this situation.
See, we're helping you out.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I don't want to necessarily be held to, you know, some sort of opinion. I mean, I kind of agree with what Mr. Kubinek said. I mean, the public record is the public record. I don't think you can change the public record. I think, certainly, I guess the board could take some sort of other affirmative type of action. And I would also state, you know, it was a previous board that had done that. So it's, I don't, I wouldn't necessarily feel real comfortable with like the board rescinding its action in that regard either. So to expunge it would mean to remove it from the record. And I don't, I would not recommend that the board take any action like that because, one, it was done by a previous board. But two, I mean, your record stands, and certainly you can amend it to reflect what actually occurred. But I wouldn't change your record at this point in time.
Okay, so, and we have a second on this. So I assume it's legal or within proper to vote on this? Would that be the?
I would, I would say no. I mean, I would think that it needs to, it would, it needs to be removed because I don't see how the board could actually follow through with that particular motion.
Okay, so, per advice to legal, and I think within the context of what I can as the chair, I can remove the motion because it's not within.
It's impossible.
It's impossible to do.
And it would be also impossible for us as a board to apologize for wrongly, wrongly censuring Mr. Kubinek when it was the other board that done it, correct?
Well, it's just, it was, it was the previous board.
That is what I was referring to, I think, as an affirmative action. And I think the board could take some type of action if that's what it wanted to do. Such as, if, I don't want to put any words in Mr. Sloan's mouth or anybody else's mouth, but if there was a motion, you know, a resolution by the board to say, we feel like this should not have occurred, basically. I think the, I think the board could consider that type of motion.
Okay, so we can't, go ahead.
I would, I would say, though, that this is not on the agenda. I don't think this is Jermaine to.
That would not be Jermaine to the.
Agreement, including the last motion. But if that's something that Mr. Sloan would like to ask, that be added to the agenda now or at a future meeting.
We'd have, we'd have to take a two-thirds vote currently to change the agenda. For today, we could possibly take it at the next meeting.
Point of information.
Yes, sir.
May I ask between now and the next board member, board meeting, to type this up and present it to the board?
You can present it, I think, to myself and superintendent, and we'll decide whether to put it on the meeting or not.
So you're saying I could ask to have an agenda spot and you would agree to it or not?
I don't know yet. I'll have to see what it says.
Yeah, he, yeah.
Yeah, you can ask, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right. So next on it is the Legislative Committee report. We're getting down to it. We're on aye. Mr. Kevin Angel and Mr. Rhonda Hoke.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will open us up and then tee up my colleague here to give some updates. This report covers the period of March twenty-twenty-five through September twenty-five. Just to reiterate our goals as a subcommittee of this board, it's really to focus on sustaining and deepening relationships with local government municipalities to support the overall goals of the school district, including infrastructure alignment, utility, facility issues, as well as to engage legislators on behalf of our priorities as a district. This can include capital funding, school construction, staffing support, bridge continuity between the past and the present. So what our commitments are to make sure that the work we've agreed upon on joint projects that we need the support of local government on are moving forward as outlined. And then to maintain an active voice in policy discussions. Since March, we have had meetings with the town of Troutman, as well as the city of, or the town of Mooresville and the city of Statesville, and then some state legislators, state representatives, excuse me. And Mr. Hoke is going to speak to both our Troutman and Mooresville, and I'll speak to Statesville and the state representative. So, Mr. Hoke.
Okay. On April second of twenty-twenty-five, we met with the town of Troutman, which was town manager Duck Wyatt and T. Ross Young, the mayor of Troutman. We've talked about a lot of subjects as far as what their plans were in the future, what ours, what kind of what our goals were in the future. Talked about Weathers Creek, also talked about Parkertown a little bit as far as the utilities and various things. And they were, of course, a lot of things have happened since that meeting. We had, of course, everybody might not know all about it, but Duck Wyatt, he's had some medical problems and he's totally out of commission with it now. But actually, the town of Troutman Council and their interim manager has stepped up and basically moved on with it, with all the, excuse me, with all the plans that Duck had kind of put the groundwork down for and moving on. You can't go into a whole lot of specifics because we had, it was in closed session tonight, but we have, we are making progress on the sewer line system and everything for Weathers Creek, which it was kind of at a, I want to say a standstill for a while there because we didn't have any. We had a housing HOA authority, didn't want to cooperate too well to start with. So this was, this was kind of one of our main meetings with them about that also. We, you know, like I said, it's in the process, it's moving now, and it looks like everything's going to go together. Everything was productive in that meeting. They appreciated us coming and actually talking to them because it's been, I don't know how many years it had been since anybody from the school system and any of these municipalities or the county or anybody had ever had any discussion to know what was going on. So like I said, it come out very productive. And we kind of, they had put a price on a sewer price for us, you know, and all that as far as what it was going to cost us. But we actually talked about that. And then, now that this other situation's come along, it's going to be considerably lower than it was when we first started this discussion. The meeting with the town of Mooresville, which was with the mayor, was Chris Carney, and town manager, police chief, and their facility services director, and several other people that work as far as department heads in the town of Mooresville. There again, it was a very productive meeting. We shared back and forth of kind of what our goals were, his goal, their goals were. And they also offered, knowing that Weathers Creek was going to have a delay on the athletic fields and all that, they actually mentioned and brought up the Mizepa Road Fields and everything down there to maybe work with us, the school system, to use that facility to help work on, you know, the time paths that we could get everything done. So like I said, both meetings were very productive and they were all wanting to meet again. So, you know, that's, as long as we're in communications and the more we talk to them and the more they know what we're wanting and what, you know, what we're wanting to do and what they're wanting to do, everything works better together to communicate.
In terms of the city of Statesville, that meeting was covered in the press. There's a couple articles you can look, for those of you who may be watching online or interested in. That meeting was probably the most well-attended. There were folks both serving on city council, the mayor, town manager, as well as folks who are running for local office. You know, the city's going through its own election, so they were all sitting around. We went over our capital projects, current and planned projects specifically focused on city schools. So updates for Statesville High School, stadium upgrades. We gave them a briefing on where we are with redistricting and what our process is going to be for public input on redistricting. And then we discussed something that's really important to all of us, which is the performance of our schools in the city limits. And then we discussed something that's really important to all of us, which is, uh, the performance of our schools in the city limits. And so, um, it was discussed, and this was probably what the biggest win from that meeting was, um, there's openness to having serious dialogue around some funding for pre-K. And so there was no, we did not have an ask of the city that was really important, and I would say to my other board members, um, soft startup is really what's working. We've got to move from star, soft startup to building trust to then being able to translate this into tangible outcomes for the district. But I would say in our first year, seeing the solidifying additional funding for the elementary school, this discussion around utilities in Troutman and Mooresville, whether we need the support from the town of Mooresville for those parks or not, the fact that they'd be willing to offer such something to us, I think is progress, as well as this opportunity to discuss pre-K. So I see these as wins that are measurable, that we can continue to grow as we have that soft startup. Moving on, meeting with Mr. Todd Carver, who many of you know, he served on this board previously. That was very much just an introduction into, uh, his work and all the advocacy that he's doing at the state legislature. The main thing I want to communicate to you all as peers is that Mr. Carver offered, he wants to meet with any and every member of our board, as well as, uh, anybody in the, the school district. He invites you to do that. Um, he even mentioned, hey, if you want to reach out one-on-one or a couple other members and go to lunch with him, um, he'd be, he'd love to talk to you, um, and just discuss issues related to the school system. Looking ahead, our next steps is to get up with the, uh, folks up in Harmony. We haven't neglected them on purpose for any reason, I want to get that communicated out. We understand that Harmony is a key stakeholder in its, um, its leadership, and so we'll be reaching out and establishing that meeting next. Um, and I encourage my colleagues on the board, as always, yes, we're a subcommittee of the board, we serve at the pleasure of the board and the chairman, uh, but please, uh, keep yourself abreast with legislative agenda items, talk to folks and, and be engaged. We're all doing this together, even if we're doing a little dividing and conquering of the work. So, thank you.
Before I offer up, uh, from the rest of the board to ask you guys some questions, if they wish. Productive, productive, I heard that. Definitely would both of you say productive and openness to continue the dialogue going forward, I guess, if you can just quickly comment on that? I know you did a little bit, but just, would you say definite?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't want, I want Mr. Hoke to be able to speak to his, his perspective of it, but I, what I believe is we've established a communication loop and we've normalized that we want to do that, you know?
Which was not there before.
Places where it wasn't. And everyone, overwhelming positive reception, even though, I mean, we, we were questioned on things, what's your ask, how much money you want? That's like one meeting. We got pointed questions, uh, but the work that happened in the meeting also reflects work done outside of the meeting. I think all of us can acknowledge that a lot happens in the hallway, right before and after meetings, um, having a face with the name, a, a person that they can go to, uh, whether it's Mr. Hoke or myself. And I, and I do want to give a, a compliment to my colleague, Mr. Hoke. I think, uh, the work that this man does behind the scenes, um, because of the respect and the credibility that he has in this community, uh, I, I just cannot stress enough that importance. And I, 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 I'm learning from him, so I appreciate your leadership, sir, and, um, and we'll continue to do this for everyone.
Mr. Hoke?
Well, one thing we didn't touch was Iredell County.
We did that before March.
I know that, but.
Yeah.
But that was, that was a positive, definitely a positive. I think right now, we've got the best rapport with the county commissioners we've ever had in a long time. And, uh, you know, our, our money showed that way a little bit when we got our, the budget and everything this year.
Credibility matters, really does, and communication and credibility matters.
Communication and all that, and be honest with you, I, I mean, I talk to those guys about every day, I really do. Not every one of them, but the, the three that, that, uh, that I communicate with are pretty much all on the same page.
And, and I would echo, you know, they, I get calls to and get feedback, and I would, if anybody's watching or listening, I, I, that matters a lot to me. I want to know how these elected officials in our community who we depend on, especially our fiduciaries, you know, uh, with the county, uh, what their expectations are, and we continue to meet those expectations and dialogue as we work with them, uh, for shared purposes. So, um, anyway.
Do any of the board members have questions for the Legislative Committee? Go ahead, Mr. Sloan.
I, I really appreciate having a Legislative Committee. I know we've wanted one for a long time. I remember Kuben, Mr. Kubenek asking for one on the previous board and couldn't get one started, so it's been asked for, for a long time. The questions I have, or the questions that comes to mind is, is when you meet these people, I assume that you, you share ideas together, uh, for the public knowledge. Y'all can't make decisions, it's got to be before the board. And how do you, in your mind, you're, you're leading them towards something, I'm sure. Is it, you lead it towards by trying to think what we would want, or how do you do that? Basically, yeah, we're just trying to make policy points to them and let them know where we're at, what we need, more or less, and what they can offer. When it comes down to it, you know, just like with the county, you know, that's where our money comes from, basically. And the more they know what we need and the more we communicate with them, the better off we are.
I, I really, uh, focus my comments on transparency and impact, so I'm information sharing, I'm not, I'm not making any ask. I am really wanting, their listening sessions as much as anything, that's part of the soft startup. I want to understand, it's also taking it on the chin. I think there's a part of building credibility where you get feedback and, um, you take it and you hear it and you take it seriously, and that's been a big, big part of this first six months or so. You know, I've heard a lot of feedback about decisions that personally I wasn't a part of, right? But I want to hear that and take that to heart and understand it, um, and then incorporate that into our work as a collective board. There's no ask I would ever make, or we would make as a committee of any, uh, governing body that was not, um, sanctioned or supported by this full board.
If, if a decision needed to be made, it would be brought back to the board to vote on or whatever, you know, that, that was offered, was made to us or anything like that. We're just basically the, the go-betweens to build the relationships.
And I would also echo, point out that much of what is asked at times is identified by our leadership team, our executive leadership team, Mr. Shankuric, um, and we're just a support role, you know, uh, in his, you know, his work is one individual I mentioned. And Mark, again, has continued, Mr. Shankuric has continued to be, um, just an exceptional, uh, representative of our Statesville schools in these meetings. Um, I appreciate having him in every one of those meetings because he really leads with a high level of competency and intelligence, um, and I appreciate him, uh, for that.
Anyone else? Questions for the Legislative Committee?
Okay, I, I really just, this is, went better than I thought it would ever did at first. I'm just very happy and pleased with where it is, keep on going and, uh, you know, we, we want to give updates every few months to the, to the board on what's going on with the Legislative Committee. And they had a recent meeting and I think, when was it, 7:30 in the morning, was that it? Fit his schedule, so.
I didn't attend because I was out of commission.
Yep, so.
I did virtual.
You did virtual, okay, so, um, that's Legislative Committee. If there's anything else, uh, last, Dr. Billy Berry, strategic plan update. I know you're going to take like 45 minutes on that? Yes, sir, that's what I said, four or five. Yes, sir, the, I was being slightly facetious at 45.
Well, I will certainly, I will certainly try not to take 45 minutes.
Strategic plan is definitely something we need to do a good job on.
While it is very important.
Yes.
I'm also agenda item J, and that's not lost on me. So, uh, just as a quick follow-up, Dr. Knight, we have 1,391 military-connected, uh, students in Iredell Statesville Schools.
Wow, that's more than I expected.
It's actually more than I expected, too. Sorry for not having that information more readily available.
That's completely understandable.
All right, the strategic planning update, just, uh, Dr. James asked me to do a quick update on where we are now. Uh, you know, strategic plans are, uh, obviously if they start very broad, you solicit lots of input and then you sort of narrow the focus from there, uh, our, our district theme. So this is sort of a timeline of where we are today. February 27th and 28th of, uh, last school year, but earlier in this year, we did some future focus planning sessions. On July 14th, we had our admin day and we worked with our principals on, um, some strategic planning, uh, goals. And then also on September 11th, this was sort of the big one, we'll talk about our stakeholder, uh, focus groups, and then we met with, last week, two weeks ago, whenever that was, with our senior leadership to talk about those meetings, and we designated some focus area champions. So I'm going to talk about those three things tonight and then talk about some next steps from there. So the future focus planning, uh, Mr. Dan Bridges came in last year and met with some of our staff. He is from Successful Practices Network, that's Bill Daggett's group. Uh, this is our Portrait of a Graduate. Those sessions were primarily focused, um, with, uh, principals and other staff members, principals, teachers, other staff members, on how do we get there? How do we accomplish the things we set out to do in our Portrait of a Graduate? Many of those things we're already doing in our class, uh, in, in our classes every, every day, uh, but there's certainly things we want to strive to get better at. So it was a two-day planning session to sort of build a shared vision of, um, what future focused learning looks like. You know, to deepen our understanding of the Portrait of a Graduate and to provide some next steps for embedding that Portrait of a Graduate, uh, vision across of our, across our classrooms and schools. So again, very broad. The other thing we did was the, uh, Department of Public Instruction recently adopted a new strategic plan. Naturally, our plan should align to theirs, so there's some continuity between what the state's doing and what we are doing. The state strategic plan has eight pillars, uh, which you can see there, I have it on a slide if that's easier to read. But, um, some of the work we did initially, uh, at our admin day was I worked with principals, uh, and, and assistant principals and said, which of these pillars are most important? Had them prioritize them, we had a lot of discussion on, um, which pillars we should focus on as well. So, uh, that's the DPI strategic planning pillars. Uh, and then from there, um, you get into a little more recently, uh, Dan Bridges came back, uh, and he and I led, uh, stakeholder focus groups. So on that day, we met with all of our principals, we, uh, met with our classified advisory, student advisory, certified advisory, and parent advisory, to ensure that we had a, uh, really a cross-section of all of our stakeholders. And, uh, we did a number of things with them. We, um, talked a lot about future focused learning, we talked a lot about, um, what, what the things that they think we should focus on, uh, and we also gave them the eight pillars. So from the eight, uh, state pillars, we really adopted five that we felt like were very important, uh, based on that stakeholder feedback. There's a fly in front of me, I apologize. And, uh, you know, the first and fourth one that you see there, sort of go together, transformative change and preparing students for the next phase of life, uh, healthy, safe learning envi- environments, uh, revering educators and operational excellence, were sort of the key pillars that all of our stakeholders said, these are the things we should really focus on as a school district. Key themes that emerged from everything that they said in their feedback was we need to be more future-focused. Uh, we need to provide relevant instruction to our student. Future, future focus meaning, you know, we, uh, obviously we talk a little about AI, but we need to talk more about AI and what we're doing, uh, and that needs to be embedded in, into our plan, uh, providing relevant instruction. Again, very important, relevant instruction looks different for every student as well. Safety and mental health were key themes, uh, that, uh, were, were, uh, that came up repeatedly, uh, and then community support for our schools. All right, so from there, on October 1st through 3rd, uh, Dan Bridges and I had, um, meetings with each of our senior leaders, um, that would sort of be our goal champions there. Uh, so when you look at the, and what we did was we talked to each of the, um, the departments that would probably champion a focus area here. So, uh, we narrowed that down into four focus areas, uh, and we'll talk a little bit about those areas and some of the things, things we hope to accomplish in each. So we had, uh, three-day planning sessions, uh, to determine those things that I just talked about. And really, we came up with those four key focus areas, uh, and this is really the important stuff as far as where we are today. Focus area number one was prepare students for the next phase of life, uh, and the goal being to ensure that every student graduates with the knowledge, skills, and character to thrive in college career and in life. Some of our focus areas from there were early literacy, consistent curriculum, rigorous instruction, and equitable access to advanced coursework. So some of the targets, and again, this is all very broad right now, was early literacy. One of the things that Ms. Jones talked about in our meeting was she'd like to ensure that, uh, 90% of second grade students are reading on grade level. So when we begin to create the plan, that's when you talk about things like, well, how do we get, how do we increase our access to pre-K? And some of the things that we've all said we value. Academic growth, reducing gaps across subgroups. When you look at our curriculum goal of our current strategic plan that's expiring, we don't really talk a lot about growth, we talk a lot about proficiency, but we all really know that growth is, um, a much more accurate measure of how, uh, how well our schools are performing. Post-secondary readiness, and again, that encompasses a lot of things. We want to increase access to AP and IB and college career promise, uh, enrollment, uh, and, but we also want to focus on industry credentials and graduation rate, uh, to ensure, because not every kid's going to go to college. So you want to make sure that everyone is leaving us prepared for whatever their future is. So when you look at the second focus area, so the goal champions for that focus area, um, will be Ms. Jones and Ms. Cooper, uh, that's sort of their wheelhouse. Focus area number two, uh, the goal champion of this, uh, goal would be Dr. Mizel. Uh, this is more of our HR goal, empower and support, uh, public school educators. So we want to recruit, retain, and revere highly effective educators by investing in their growth, well-being, and leadership. The focus will be on competitive compensation, morale, retention, differentiated supports for new and experienced staff. So when you look at the targets for that, our old plan focused on vacancies and retention, uh, and we've had a strong focus on that for the last couple of years. We give you guys a vacancy report every single month on, on where we are. But we also want to make sure we're taking care of educators and investing in them, supporting new teachers. One of the things that we found, not only in Iredell Statesville Schools, but all throughout North Carolina and likely the country, is that many people are entering education through alternative pathways. So we want a stronger emphasis on our BT Academy and providing supports to those teachers who are provisionally licensed. Also, leadership development. Uh, we want to make sure we have succession plans for our schools, um, so that, uh, we're building up the capacity of our assistant principals, so when our principal vacancies, uh, occur, that our APs are ready to take those roles. Or when a central office vacancy, um, you know, occurs, that we have people that are ready to take those roles. So we want to make sure we focus on leadership development and beginning teacher support. And then culture satisfaction and morale, we had a couple of indicator, or one indicator in our old plan about, um, the teacher working condition surveys, so we want to look at some climate survey data as well. And there to, to continue to focus on culture satisfaction and morale of our employees, because it's much easier to keep teachers than it is to find teachers, so we want to hang on to the great teachers that we have. Our third focus area is the safety and well-being of students, uh, and that goal is to create safe, inclusive, and caring environments where every student feels a sense of belonging and well-being. And the focus area will be on mental health support, student discipline, and strong safety protocols, with some of our targets being, uh, physical safety and security. Making sure that our, uh, emergency management and safety protocols are 100% compliant with the state. Uh, we've had some work to do on that over the last year or so, trying to get that up to date. Even some of the other safety protocols like lockdown drills, um, reunification drills, things like that, partnering with our local law enforcement agencies, uh, to conduct some of those drills. We already do that, but we want to make sure, uh, we continue to do so and keep those partnerships strong. Student well-being, uh, obviously, when, when we talk to our students, uh, at our student advisory, uh, student mental health and well-being is at the forefront of, uh, of their concerns. That and what they eat in the cafeteria are their two biggest concerns. So, uh, certainly that's something we want to continue to focus on, is student, uh, health and well-being. Discipline and disproportionality as well. Uh, in our old plan, we did have a goal to reduce exclusionary practices like ISS and OSS. Uh, one of the things we found that we, as our suspensions has, uh, reduced over the past couple of years, we've also seen an uptick in our, uh, academic performance. So, um, you know, one could say those things might be correlated, uh, but it, you know, anytime you're taking away, uh, you're excluding a student from, um, learning, then, you know, that's obviously going to be detrimental to their academic success as well. So we want to continue that focus and we also want to eliminate disproportionals. You know, with eliminating disproportionals, uh, we, we still have, what that really means is do we suspend, um, or exclude a disproportionate number of, uh, any particular subgroup? And one of the things we found is that we do, um, particularly in the areas of, um, students with disabilities and African-American males, uh, there are some disproportionals there that. with disabilities and African-American males, there are some disproportionals there that we want to continue to work on. So while we are making progress on these things, we want to continue that focus and certainly chronic absenteeism. So that is a much more robust, you know, goal than we had in our last strategic plan that focused on those things. And then finally, future-ready operations. Mr. Schenkeric will be the goal champion of this goal, with the goal being to deliver efficient, equitable, and innovative operational systems that support learning and future-focused schools. You know, and the focus being modernized facilities, reliable transportation technology, integration, and sustainable funding. So the targets for that are, obviously, some of the things we've talked about really over the last few minutes with modern, modernized and efficient buildings, device management. We are up for a device refresh. That should certainly be something we talk about with our strategic plan. What is our goal for devices in the future? And all these things, really, one of our disconnects, I think, in the past is that our strategic plan has been somewhat disconnected from our budget process. But really, if we create these, this plan, and we say that these things are, are our goal, these things should be really, should really be married to one another so that our capital plans, our device management, all those things are really congruent with our budget. Efficient transportation, I think it's important to keep that in there. We have made tremendous gains over the past couple of years, saved over a million dollars a year in transportation with some of the improvements that we've made. I think we should continue to focus on that. Increased participation in the child nutrition program. I think we are up a little this year, but we, we want to make sure we're measuring that as well. And then sustainability and equity, equity in our facilities so that one school's not getting all the stuff. And Dr. James will tell you, we hear that all the time, that school A is getting all the stuff and school B is getting nothing. So we want to make sure we have that built into the plan as well. So our next steps in the strategic plan will be the goal champions will begin to refine the goals and indicators. These are all very broad right now. Then we'll begin to put those on paper a little more clearly. We would like the Board of Education to be involved in that process by each of you serving on a focus area goal team. So we have had a little conversation about who might be a natural fit in each of the areas based on sometimes your own expertise. But certainly, we, we can talk a little bit more about that in the future, but we'd like your, your input and feedback as we begin to put pen to paper on the plan. And then marketing and a dashboard for all of this. Jada does a really good job of, you know, putting together some of our, our design and things like that, and then getting it on the website with the dashboard so that we can track some of these indicators in real time. And then I think Dan Bridges from Successful Practices Network is going to come back, and he'd like to do a little bit of professional development with the board on implementing with the strategic plan, and also some professional development with our principals. So realizing, I went through that very quickly. Any questions that I can answer for you?
Dr. Berry, before I open it, the rest of the board, I guess my only, my question at this time, my only question slash comment at this time, I just, you know, you've seen strategic plans. I've been in education. You see strategic plans a lot, and they come and go. And oftentimes, my issue has been with them is measurable success. And how do you define that? Have metrics to specifically define them. This is the engineer in me looking for something, you know, how do you know, you know, what's your success criteria on something? So I guess my thing will be on this is making sure that however we do it, I like having a dashboard so we, so the public can know how close, how we're meeting, and that's that transparency that Mr. Angel likes to talk about, that I completely agree with. But we need to have some way, somehow, to basically say, at the end of, this is a five-year plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay, at the end of five years, and I would hope that we could, that whoever's here, it may or may not be me, who knows? Who knows where I'll be in five years? Who knows where any of us will be in five years? But that we could say, we met goal, this goal, we exceeded expectations, or have some sort of metric on there to say how well we did on what we wanted to do, and we can be accountable to the public for what we said our goals are.
So, so Billy?
And we, we do. So we've, and that's what some of the goal teams will do. In fact, even when we talked about these things, I deliberately left them unmeasurable.
I, I know right now, because we're not at that point yet.
Because some of that is, well, we need to see what our AP enrollment is today. To determine what, what a reasonable goal is. So that would really be the work of the goal teams. I 100% agree with you that all of these things should be measurable. So at the end of the five-year plan, you know, we can certainly look back and say we accomplished that, or we still need to focus on that.
So we use, we do SMART goals. So all of us have been trained probably 15 times, which they're, they have to be specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely. And every goal we make is that. If you can't measure a goal, then there's news to have it in a strategic plan. And the one, the plan we have now has measurable goals that we, we pull up the strategic plan when we look at, there, there is a method to the madness. You have the state strategic plan, then you have the district strategic plans, and then those give way to the school improvement plan. So all those are symbiotic relationships. It's not silos. So everything ties together, beginning with the state strategic plan. And the edict from the Constitution to have schools that are basically the same across the state and use the same criteria. So that sort of sets in place the strategic planning process.
Yeah, the, the quote, I guess I'm building on, and I, I, the SMART type using that acronym, the quote that's attributed to a guy named Lord Kelvin, which was named, William Thompson, of course, the Kelvin Temperature Scheme Scale is named after him. If you can't measure it, you cannot improve it.
Absolutely.
So, open this up to board members, questions, comments for Dr. Berry. You want, recognize, Ms. Cooper, let you go ahead first.
Dr. Berry, it used to be, at least I always thought the third grade was the key milestone for reading level. Now you just advancing it to K through two is, is a more stricter standard?
Sure. Now, I don't want to speak for Ms. Jones, but I think you guys, you, you're third grade.
You done. So third grade is a state metric for reading proficiency, but they are K2 metrics. Your mic is done. But I mean, your K2 metrics are, we, and that's what I think Ms. Hanes had asked earlier. And I hope when we do our year-end review, which I think we scheduled it for December, third week of December before break, we put it on the calendar today.
Put it on the calendar.
Right, so we still haven't got our individual teacher data, but one of the key points, we are, we are inundated with data. So K2, again, we do progress reports, we do report cards. If you're behind in reading, we do progress monitoring weekly that we send home. So there is tons of data a parent gets to tell you where your child is or is not. So we definitely look at K2 data to know where we're going to be when it comes to third grade. If those kids going into third grade are far behind, are very far behind, third grade scores are not going to be good.
And that's really what I was going to say. I think the focus on K2 literacy really lends itself to them being ready by when they get to their.
Well, that's great. But from a semantics point of view, when you say a student is reading on grade level, and then when we see the proficiency number, what does that mean? What proficiency number from a zero to 100 equals grade level?
What proficiency number?
Yeah.
It's, it's an achievement level. I mean, would you guys like to come up and talk about literacy?
Because you see the, you know, you see the, the data, right? Forty-six percent, you know, ELA, whatever. But what does being on grade level, what number is it?
Really, well, and, and I can probably do this part. So the state gives achievement levels for EOCs and EOGs. What those achievement levels mean is a level three means that you are on grade level. A level four or five means that you're college and career ready. Naturally, we want all students to be level fours or fives, but a student is deemed proficient on grade level if they get a level three or above in any EOC or EOG. I'm not sure if that's.
I, I understand that part of it because if, if you have a level three of 40%, right? That means 60% are not proficient.
That's correct.
But what does, what does mean, what does that 40% translate to being on grade level? Is there, can you make that discussion? I mean, can that be drawn or not?
So, sorry. Sure, by all means.
It's definitely something that we want to discuss in, in my group. If that's, if that's something you're interested in doing, I'd love for you to be in my group. But the K2, the reason we're focusing in on K2 is when you're teaching kids to read, there's the readability piece, and then there's the comprehension piece. So as Dr. James was saying, I really want to focus in on the readability. Teach those babies how to decode. Teach those babies how to build up their fluency so that when we hit that third grade, it's too late at that point. It's too late if we can't decode and we don't have the comprehension and the fluency's at 10 words a minute, or, you know, whatever the case may be. So a goal of readability and then a goal of, of comprehension, and we'll be able to measure it by multiple different ways, whether it's a Lexile level or the decoding, whatever the case may be. Then we'll be able to compare that to the way the state does the EOG. So we'll be able to compare it on the individual student level, meaning that here is Sally, here is her projection. Did she beat her projection by percentile? But then we'll also be able to compare it against this Lexile level typically, on a good day, exceeds a level three, or exceeds a level four, or exceeds a level five. So I really want to get in and dig into during the strategic plan of here is our K2 plan, and if we do this right, these babies are going to exceed any kind of proficiency.
Well, that's great. Thank you. And last question was, do we know, where, where are we at for chronic absenteeism within the district? Do we know where that is?
The quarter just ended this Friday, so we have not run those numbers yet.
Okay.
I'm working through data right now.
Yeah, well, I know with the presentation from Lake Shore, they had a number for their school. It was 20% something.
That was for last school year.
Oh, okay.
Because it, we have to physically run those numbers because those numbers come to us one year later from the state.
Okay, thank you. So you can have that maybe next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Sloan?
Something maybe I didn't understand. We've got these eight pillars, and we, we draw from them what we want, really wanted to focus on. And I, I heard you mention safety and school, student well-being. It seems like we already excel at that. And also, you mentioned transportation. We're, we're excelling at that now. So why would we focus on them that we're already doing good instead of picking one that we're not doing good at?
Well, we certainly want to continue to get better at those things. We are still not as efficient in transportation as, as we.
Transportation has money attached to it. You go backwards, you lose money, you lose positions.
Yeah. So, and, you know, we're still spending local money on transportation because we're exceeding the amount of money that the state gives us. Now, we reduced that from 2.7 million to 1. something million, but there's certainly still room for improvement there. Ideally, we wouldn't have to spend local money on transportation. So while we have improved, we, we still want to continue to do so. Safety and well-being, I would say the same thing. You know, that's, those, those are still things we want to continue to, to improve upon.
Anyone else? Ms. Kern?
I would just like to say, if you had recommendations on what part you wanted us to serve, I serve at your leisure, just let me know.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, Dr. Berry, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda is public comment. And Mr. Mueller is not here. I think he's left already. Ms. Amber Ford, you're the only one, so if you'll come up. Yes, yes, you get three minutes. Yeah, you get three minutes. I'll, let me read what I have to read, and then I'll go from there. Then we'll, we'll let you speak. The public comment time, it's time for members of the public to share their viewpoints with the board. All speakers will state if they're resident of Arredale County, and if they're a parent slash guardian of the student in the school system. The board does not respond to individuals who address the board, except to provide a request clarification. I tend not to, I, I tend not to like to do that. I want to give you guys the respect you deserve. If there are a large number of speakers, the board may require the designation of spokesperson. We don't have that tonight. Complaints involving individual personnel or student matters are generally confidential and not appropriate for the public comment session. Report should be reported to superintendent. Disruption by any person or, or person of the public media was subject to action in accordance with general statute 143-318.17. So one to 10 speakers, just three minutes per speaker. Ms. Ford, you have the floor. Okay.
I'm loud enough without it, but, okay. Said, my name is Amber Ford, and I'm a parent of children in the exceptional children's program here, as well as just general education in Arredale State School Schools. I'm here tonight to ask for your help on a concern that is affecting many of our students within the autism and behavioral support programs. Students who need additional academic support are taught by licensed teachers. Speech services are provided by supervised, or supervised by a licensed speech-language pathologist. Occupational therapy is supported by a licensed occupational therapist. Across our district, children who require behavior support services are not currently receiving support under the same licensure and supervisory requirements as other areas. Our students with autism and behavioral needs are supported by autism support technicians and inactive registered behavior technicians who are not being supervised or supported by a licensed BCBA as required by the Behavior Analyst Certification Board. This is not a criticism of our staff. Our autism support techs and RBTs work incredibly hard and deserve the training, support, and professional oversight to ensure success. The district office CC staff have confirmed that we currently do not have a BCBA supervising them, even though the active job postings within the district state that they are expected to work under, under a BCBA and complete tasks defined under ABA. When a child struggles to communicate, participate, self-regulate, or remain safely in the classroom, that's not a matter of preference. It's a foundation of their ability to access learning itself. Without the properly supervised and supported behavior professionals, we leave both students and staff without the tools they need to succeed. I have been told that ABA is just a methodology, but that is not accurate. ABA is a field of science with evidence-based support and must be provided and supervised by licensed professionals as recognized by law. Restricting access to qualified behavioral services when they are necessary for a child to make progress is not a difference in methodology, it's a difference in opportunity. I respectfully ask that the board review this practice and ensure supervision and uphold behavior supports with the same professional standards already provided to other recognized service areas for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I received a phone call today from a, a business leader in Mooresville, and he wanted to come tonight to, to speak at board comment. And frankly, I was rather embarrassed because he was asking me what time he should come. And so I told him that he needed to be here by 6:00 in order to sign up because the list is pulled at that time. And it didn't used to be that way, by the way. So I, I felt very embarrassed to say, like, you know, you can show up, but you be, need to be here at 6:00, but I can't tell you if it's going to be one, two, three, or four hours before you can speak. So I would really ask that you reconsider moving public comment forward in the meeting because there really is no valid reason in my mind why we should force the public to wait three and four hours into the night. Thank you.
All right. I will take those comments into consideration. Next on the agenda X is superintendent comments, Dr. Jeff James.
Thank you, Chairman. I did want to correct a misspeak that Mr. Sloan pointed out, so let me clarify for our staff. We have many people that are making $41,000 that choose to do so because they love kids. Highly qualified, however, by state mandate, out of 1,300-plus teachers, about 50% of ours are considered highly qualified because to be highly qualified, you have to go through a licensed education program and come out that pathway. Now, like myself, who come in lateral entry, you can take a ton of coursework and become highly qualified after taking the coursework. So.
So I by no means do not want to shed any negative light on those people that choose to do what I think is God's calling, and that's to raise the next generation. We appreciate that. It's sad, though, that as a state, we choose to pay you so little so that we've gone from 8,000 to 10,000 students per year in education programs to less than 2,000. So we also need 10,000 teachers every year because of retirements and turnover. So you can see the cliff that we are getting ready to fall off. We have even went overseas to hire teachers, but most recently, with some administration changes, we're no longer able to do that without spending $100,000 per K1 visa. So we've sort of had that doorway shut also. So I'm not sure what we're going to do for teachers interstate, and it depends where you're at in the state. If you're in a mountain county where the cost of living's less, the average household income in Iredelle County, the latest report that come out from MyFutureNC is $82,000. Now, I would say that those of us that live in West Iredelle and up towards North Iredelle would probably say, where'd you get that number? But that is, that's where we're at. So if you're trying to attract a young person into our county with plethora of debt for getting their degree in education, it's hard to attract them to a school system paying 41,000 because of the state. And when other companies around us are paying 60,000 to 65,000, you can become a welder. You know, I guess our teachers could, you know, we're getting ready to start a night welding class with Mitchell. I guess some of our teachers unfortunately could become welders and go out and get a job that pays more. So, God, don't do that. So it's just, when are we going to recognize the future of our state depends on what we do in our classrooms today? There are so many things that could be fixed, and we're not telling you to throw money at anything. We're being very effective and efficient with what we're doing. We've looked at everywhere we could cut costs, and we're down below the bone. Eighteen positions over six years we've reduced in central office. That just doesn't occur at other places. We're very good stewards of the money, and I would say, Adam would tell you that it takes, and collaboration from the entire group of people. His department does a good job of processing what they do, but I think our executive leadership understands, and we meet every Monday to talk about budgets and what we need to do, where we need to look, where can we make cuts to continue to support our classrooms. So we still are doing our best to support education in the classrooms. If properly funded in special ed, we get 14, about 14, eight per child. Think about this. So as Ms. Ford specified, there are some of our children that require a high level of need. So those kids are being catheterized every day. They have feeding tubes. They have significant diabetes. So what happens is, in the wisdom of our state legislator, we decide that, hey, teachers can do that. So our teachers are pseudo-nurses, and so before you can ever start class, you better make sure you check on the five or six IUP students you have, your chronically ill students, and your 504 students, to make sure that you're not going to get in trouble for not providing them their services that day. And so that's in a room of 20. So we are constantly seeing an influx of special needs students, albeit great nation, we have a pandemic with prescription drugs and illegal drugs. Unfortunately, that shows up in the kids that walk in our door at kindergarten. We've had numerous kids this past year, seven, eight, nine years old, come in and pull-ups, never seen the light of day of a schoolhouse, and you drop those students into our regular classroom, it becomes very taxing to meet those students' needs. So yes, I fully appreciate anyone that takes this on as a profession, because it is a very difficult job to do, and all too often, it seems like it lacks the respect it once had. So thanks to all our employees, we're, as you see, we have many irons in the fire in all the things we're required to do by the state, federal government. At the end of the day, the most important thing is somewhere in that mix, and that's our students. So it'd be nice just to be able to focus on them 100% of the time. So thank you. Appreciate the board's support tonight in taking input from our principals, because I know there was some dread on if we didn't have cell phones at high school, what was going to happen tomorrow. So thank you for supporting them.
I see no need to go into closed session. Just quick announcements. Intercession days are this week at MB Mills, and October 20th and 21st of next week are teacher workdays at MB Mills. They're on a year-round schedule. October 29th is early release for professional development. That's at Traditionale and MB Mills, and you will see us again up here on November 3rd for the committee, the whole meeting. And so after that, by the way, we'll go in, we'll make a motion to go in, we'll approve the agenda, make a motion to go into closed session at 4:00 PM. Return to open session, the regular meeting at 6:00 PM. So without further ado, Ms. Haines?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Do I have a second? We have a second by Mr. Hope. All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.